Answer there. Now, we have three microphones here. All right, listen louder. All right. The motion was to secure the services of Dr. Helen Benjamin as our transitional acting president for a period of two six weeks and to approve her contract at a regular meeting stated now July 22nd. Motion was made by Kate Parker, seconded by Robert Miller, and approved by unanimous agreement.
I would ask this one number and join the meeting.
Uh.
Thank you.
So Helen Benjamin, thank you very, very much for for being here today and for accepting our invitation and offering your very valuable services to us in this transitional year. Thank you. Okay.
Well, I think there's something about this place. There's problems with it.
Can we say that it's okay to remove our masks if we're going to be talking? Is that okay? Because when you do those, you move forward, you go.
Right, come on.
Yeah. Um, so our next order of business is, um, uh, the federal allegiance. So will you move back?
Uh, that's all.
Uh.
It's the next group of rest.
I understand the federal allegiance, but bear in mind that it's the ones who have. My federal allegiance to the United States of America and generally how it stands, one nation, united, invisible, liberty, justice, law. Thank you. To send the circle of justice.
I think I may have it.
Uh, the local show that we talk about. And I welcome you all, not just trustees, but everybody else who took. Uh, and we here, uh, for the review of our paper. Um, item six point one has to be removed. How many, uh, sir, Tracy Reynolds, speaking to us? Tracy, do you want to speak? I'm seven point two, or you? First, Tracy. Uh, would you like to speak up?
Uh, sure. That would be great. Should I?
Uh, get a little closer to us so that we can hear you and also be picked up by the microphone.
Okay. Would it be okay if I took my mask off?
I think that would be excellent.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I am fully vaccinated, by the way. We have that for a long time. Hi, my name is Tracy Reynolds and I'm the lab tech in the chemistry department. I'd like to begin by saying how disappointed I am. I can't believe that in your, the board's self-assessment survey results, one of you answered no to question number forty-seven, which asked, should goal number two, student safety and well-being be continued into the 2021, 2022? Again, one of you said no. Again, one of you said no. I have a pretty good idea of who it was. I suspect it's the same board member that displayed an ongoing disregard for student and employee safety, entered in many of your comments and displayed in the decisions that you made and the votes that you cast. You made it no secret that health and safety matters are not one of your top priorities. It seems to me that there are several people at the top of this pyramid, we call SNCs, in positions of power and authority, including some of you board members, making some really poor decisions about our and our students' health, safety, and well-being based on the testimony of a few repeat community members with no real affiliation to the campus other than perhaps living in the same city or district. These same repeat community members that throw around their title of doctor like it actually means anything in the context with which they're speaking. These few individuals clearly don't hold a doctorate in virology, medicine, microbiology, or even entomology, if we want to straighten the bottom of the barrel, of whom I trust their testimony more than these community members who have so easily swayed some of you. Melanothin and ten for entomologists, they're important too. And no, someone that went to MIT and was involved in the development of solar panels does not count as an expert in the field of vaccines and viruses. Even I know that. This same handful of community members continue to spout misleading and outright false information, and some of you take their misleading and false information and base your decisions on it. This same misleading and false information from some of these very community members that corrupted YouTube to remove an academic senate recording from its platform due to the falsehoods that were stated. While, at the very same time, some of you, members of the board of trustees, completely disregard the informed, science-based, and factual information and evidence provided to you by our very own exceptionally intelligent, qualified, and knowledgeable medical microbiologist, Robbie Fisher. This is absolutely mind-blowing to me. I don't get from the decisions I've witnessed and the documents I've seen, received, and read, it seems pretty clear that there are no well-developed concrete plans for everyone to return to campus safely. The distribution and dissemination of critical information has been exceptionally painful most of the time. Not only has the limited information been untimely and sometimes false, but in at least one recent instance, sadly outdated. This really is thoroughly unacceptable for an institution of our caliber. Can't we please get back to the process of actual shared governance and widespread participation and contributions from all of our rooms on campus regarding the important issues facing our campus right now? Some of you seem to forget that many of our employees and students are members of the greater San Barbara community and this district, and that many of the employees and students on campus are your constituents. This campus, and especially the people at the top, that are currently making all of the decisions for all of us, really need to get their act together and hammer it all out, develop a safe and intelligent plan. And that needed to happen yesterday. We all, all of us, really need to get our act together. All of us together, not separately. And please, for the safety of our students and employees, please do continue to recognize goal number two, student safety and well-being, into the twenty-one, twenty-two academic year and beyond. Literally forever, please. Thank you.
You be Tracy. I do seven point four. Which is the first of the. But I think once again, introduce Helen.
Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to be back here, um, on campus today. As we all know, one of us is a student at the University of New York. Or any university. So, um, it's a pleasure and to work with you again in this capacity, and you're your retreat facilitator. So I talked to the majority of the board members. Uh, what are your expectations might be for the day? And attacked to get like an agenda that will kind of get us to think where we want to be and who put up a, uh, a high point. So we're gonna work through. I probably have way too much in it and I always kind of modify as I go on. And I know what you have for the afternoon. Those items are really important, you know, reports. But I wanted to start with, because some of you have, you, you want to get your goals up. And I think that reflection in all of this is really, really important. Think that, especially now over twenty twenty-one. And that's the, uh, gonna be the focus for the next. How about, think about what you can learn. What you hear, what kind of decisions you made, what we've learned from that, and what kind of. You've already done your self-evaluation, right? You could follow, you could turn which one from. And we'll see it a minute, the majority. One, we can all of us for those, we're gonna walk through, through that as well. But I want to be here first, though. Um, I think I wanted to say this here before that. There's a reason why, uh, rearview mirror in a car is small and the windshield is so weird. I heard Seaver say this one time and I just started, but. Because all you want to do with the rear is glass. You don't want to stay there. You want to learn from it. Period. How can you go back? The windshield is so weird, because that's what's so funny. And there's just so much that we can. Plan for us, don't let the windshield. But always in mind that. And so, the first thing I want you to do this morning is to think about her college. And just every aspect of it. And think of the one thing, the one thing you would change if you had a magic wand. And you had this power to take over at this college. What would that one thing be? That's the first. And give me a minute or two. If Laura wants to be first, but. A chair.
Oh, and is that remote I gave you should go forward?
I'm on a practice. Oh, but while you're thinking, I have these ground rules that I hope you'll buy into. I just need you to do three things. First is to listen as an ally and listen and engage. Because we have all these communication skills for our. And the one, all of us especially, probably fail at most is this, which is probably the most important. So today, we want you to engage verbally, but we also want you to listen to each other, because that's critical. And see this as an opportunity to learn and plan effectively for this college. And then the second one, which you all do anyway, but recognize and respect that all of you are in different places and have a right to your opinion. And sometimes that's the toughest part for us, to listen to somebody else's opinion and not be upset if it varies from ours. But today, I'm asking you to have an open mind. Look for opportunities in our conversations where you can join each other, not judge each other, and also be curious. Because that's what we need, especially in this situation. And then, of course, here's the big challenge, the biggest of all, is to be fully present. Because there are so many things now that can take our attention away. And we try to multitask, and I just decided that I'm a marvel at it. And I'm stopping, I really try to stop. There's nothing there you're supposed to do. We need your full attention. So try not to text or use your phone, check video. I'll give you more breaks and you can do all that stuff. But just be fully present. There ain't nobody who can't do video lessons. So if you have a commitment, all right. Now, so let's start with our, uh, magic wand business. And I'll go to the outcomes over there. So what we could change? Who wants to be first? Okay. Here.
Um, and this is seeing almost my gene, but I'm really impressed with those three rules. And there's single, uh, certain thing that I would love to adopt on behalf of our campus is, uh, an increased capacity to listen. Sometimes it feels to me as if we're talking past each other, as if we disagree. But those who look and will carefully listen will, uh, I think illustrate that in the main, we are the people. So listening is at the very tip of my magic wand.
Okay, uh, Robert?
Um, I had somewhat of a, I would just say after that, to listen and to respect, uh, others' opinion. Uh, it's too often, it's either on board, we had some very contentious issues. original issue, parent issue, vaccine issue, playoff issue, we had some difficult issues. And too often when those issues, uh, person. Uh, the temperature just gets too hot. It just gets too hot, you know, which will, who can find a way to lower the temperature? Uh, and understand that everybody speaking wants the very best for this college. We don't all have the same ideas on how to get there. We all have that goal to help students achieve.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes. Mine is kind of, um, encompassing. It's, um, campus mind. And, um, definitely it is quite clear and Robert has said, but also this whole idea that we need to remember that we're a team, all of us are a team. And, um, and that's, uh, like, some of the tendency I'll almost.
Thank you very much. Yes, Tom?
I'm gonna almost say the same thing. Uh, I would just fix all the problems we've been trying to solve. But that'll be, that'll be, that'll be.
I don't know if you can hear, but, um, trustee Evelyn said, but he said to address, fix the kind of campus that addressing all the issues in the climate center.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, fix it with you.
Next, please.
Um. I said one thing, and that's, that's hard. Uh, I do agree with the campus mind fix as a one thing. Um, but I would add as a first step that I think it would go a very long way to bringing us together if we had a vaccine mandate. Um, that step, I think would lower the temperatures and help us achieve the other goals that have been discussed.
Okay.
Please.
All right. Okay, two more trustees.
My friend Anna Everett, would you like to go first or would you want to go with the things? Uh huh, okay. Um, so if I could change one thing, I would probably change, um, the fact that we have such beautiful people that choose to make San Barbara City College their home as superintendent president and their tenure for reasons, um, was interrupted. And it was a very unfortunate, um, thing that has been the case for San Barbara City College for part two long now. And I don't think it requires a magic wand actually, not a magic wand. Because we are perfectly wonderful, made, we have, it will be interconnected at a very human level, in time, with the compassion and influence. So that, I think, is a very good thing that we can change right now.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and bringing up the rear.
I've heard nothing, um, that I disagree with, so I want to echo what I've heard expressed here, uh, from my fellow trustees. Um, I think the only thing I would change, uh, would be, I think, um, I wish when we had initially, uh, started the public comment about the, um, the vaccine mandate, that we had not shifted the order of the discussion where initially we were going to have our, our, um, our discussion and then have public commentary and remove it to the end. That created a difference in the appearance of, of how many people were for or against the mandate. So, you know, kind of sticking with two different besties that possible with the agenda as the living, you know, we do have the option of moving things around. I think that's the one thing based on that one issue that was so heated, you know, really, and that turning of the wrong and something that, um, that maybe could, wouldn't have necessarily turned out that way.
Thank you. So we have seven things now, starting with this because it's kind of setting the tone for the day. And keep these in mind, because we're gonna talk about the goals you have, and we're gonna talk about new goals as well. And so, the seven things, I'll just summarize. Increased capacity, and none of these are impossible. Listen and respect, give opinions to others. Uh, remember that we are a team and use that and live that. I'm assuming how that words in my, when it comes to climate climate, that would change. Um, they're huge, right? And then, address the issues in the climate center. But if there's roadmap there, I haven't seen it, but I'm assuming it gives you roadmap. And then, uh, approve the vaccine mandate, uh, because it will bring the campus together. And then, a magic wand required, but some planning and deliberate actions required to have a superintendent president for longer periods of time. He's a, an under-able team, not a reasonable. And then, just in terms of a, uh, kind of process issue on discussion around the mandate, if that order of the discussion would remain as it is currently and not shifted for whatever the reason for. So those are your seven things. They're not, they're not bad things. They're really good things and achievable. So anticipated outcomes. And we need to have a little discussion about this, because I made these up kind of based on what you told me in our conversations. And we can make adjustments, because I want to try to make sure we achieve these outcomes by four thirty, and we're gonna end at four thirty. Draft goals for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, and, and I've been working with Lindsay too, that's just a gentleman, yeah. Enhanced understanding of the twenty-one, twenty-two adoption budget, because my understanding in it is that there are some things that are that you're hoping that you'll be able to then move it. Yes. And then a third one. I were enhanced again, because I wasn't sure, but an enhanced understanding of facilities planning. So what, uh, Lindsay has done is to, and I think this is part of a request too, to look at what we've turned about your project, turned it, you said, with the last, last couple of plans. And if you have, you have a special, you can, it's like, about all of these things. Was that accurate? And then the next one. I'm not really sure about this one, but I think I heard it. Some strategies for positive social programs. Can we talk about that question? And then clarity on the use of purpose. Seeing some of you are really kind of confused about what happened to that money and how, where it's going, how it's supposed to be used and all of that. And you need, you need to be clear on it. So we're gonna try to work on that today. Does that make sense to you? And then you have, you guys are swimming in money. Uh, Jeff is gonna come and talk about that. We have a document in the board packet. You'll come and get some background information on that, I will discuss it with you. And then you can make some, and you don't have to do it today, but you can at least start talking about possible uses of that. And I have to say. Oh, any other outcomes we want for the day? So we'll see. That may be a lot of issues. Yes, Marshall, trustee.
Um, this is kind of a future planning thing. Um, and I don't think that's being out come for today, but I am concerned that this process we have right now, where it's hard to hear each other, we don't have video, et cetera, um, is not a good model for going forward for board meetings. And we can still do that.
So our video, recording, and so, yes.
And the audio, we hear each other. And, and the audio ought to be able to hear us. And I'm not confident that this audio is going to be anything other than up and down and up and out in terms of some people will be heard and some not. Okay, because we had that happen before, um, and I don't attribute this if we're not in our usual location. Our usual location is well set up.
Yes.
And understand the problems we're dealing with. And I'm just suggesting we should try to do better in making our meetings available, et cetera.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you want to go back to soon, Marshall? You said that.
I can hear you.
Right, do you want to go back to soon? Because at least, like, it's, it's there and you can do this, is that what you're trying?
I don't know what the best solution is. I'm just suggesting that this is something we keep working on.
Yes, and for the future.
For the future.
Absolutely.
Not as an outcome.
Not for today, and be aware. So it means everybody needs to kind of speak up a bit so that we can, we can all be heard.
Strongly music, project.
Project, okay, hold my back for two minutes, okay. Any other outcomes for the day? All right, so we'll see how far we get here. Now, I, I have been working today and thinking, because that's, that's what you need to do, so this is what I want you to do right now. Everybody's pen and paper? And I want you to think about this. I want you to write down the answer first before you give it. And I'm gonna give you five to ten minutes to think of one thing that happened this year, an activity or project. It could be, uh, it could have been generated by the board. It could have been something that happened on, at the, uh, the college. One thing that went really well, in your opinion. As long as, then, you can believe the strength. But then, I want you to think of the opposite. Oh, pretty shitty, but it's something from that, I should very quickly, I want. Ah, because all of you might say the same thing, but. One day it went really, really well, and one day it was the opposite. And then, for those two things, I want you to think about the board's role in it. Maybe we didn't have roles to be involved in. Maybe we did, but if the board did have a role in it, then, um, if the results were good, I want you to think about board behavior. What did the board do? How did the board behave to ensure that Florida, for the school, is doing well? If it was something that didn't, or a thing that didn't go very well, what did the board do? Then possibly not did it all right. So this is a little introspection here. You need to just think about it, because we're talking about this year and how this is really about behavior. And of course, where you said, I see you writing, I'll stop talking. And of course, where you said, I see you writing, I'll stop talking. Okay, I'm going to start now with you, Marshall.
Okay. All right, trustee Everett. Thank you. So, it's related to my what worked well. It's the back end of that, so I'm going to reverse order. And it has to do with some of the comments that were expressed in the campus private town halls. I felt like some of the issues and points that people raised could have been taken up at our meetings, maybe agendaized and addressed. In particular, some of people's concerns about retaliation if they come forward with a concern or complaint. So, I just felt like the passion that people bring to the, you know, to those meetings, people speaking up for the first time, maybe uncertain, really something that we can take up with the board and maybe scrutinize and we're going to take a look at.
And you're saying there should have been some follow-up on it.
Pick up, maybe follow up. Pick up, just.
And then, we just kind of follow to, and I just dropped. Clear? Okay, all right. We're just going through, we're starting with what didn't work well. Trustee Everett is talking about the board's response to the comments we planned. So, yes, trustee Nocturne.
Clearly, the college vaccination policy or more broadly, the response to opening up campus in the fall. I mean, using the shared board and administrative board and administrative play. I just would add that I think everyone has in mind the safety of the faculty, staff, and students as a high goal. Everyone agrees that vaccination, masking, testing, all the different things are essential to that safety. But after that, I think there are significant differences and indeed chaos that resulted. I think administration failed to present a thorough plan for the autumn. And I think the board could have been more to help the administration provide that policy or insist on a detailed, detailed administration program.
Because that board superintendent president relationship is a partnership.
Correct.
And the two are working together, that's what I keep saying.
Yes.
Yes, I almost hung on to that because it's something that's so obvious, make it better. And that is seeing the shared governance process break down. It's not just ensuring that the administration has plans coming forward, ensuring that the administration has included staff and students in developing that plan. And I think that what ended up happening was that staff in the need for the B plan created it and essentially the shared governance process broke down. And negotiations broke down. So, to me, that is something that we as the board needed to be sure that administration was, was working through that in a way that we just didn't remember to be able to happen in this whole year.
Yes, Marshall.
Well, I have the same issue down. I was contrasting good and what went well and what didn't, why, I think. But I agree that with Kate, that we break down the shared governance. This should have come to us in a way that the board was both involved, working with the administration as a team and with the college as a team. And it should have come to us with a shared vision of what should happen. And I feel like the board's role here, I mean, I think we tried to bring something forward, but it was clear that nothing was happening, but it shouldn't have originated that way.
Right.
And that confused the problem. And I also feel that what went wrong was the alternative to the proposal that was on the agenda was not on the agenda. So, no one of our employees had any opportunity to respond to that alternative at the time and comment and say what they thought of it. And the public and even board members were caught surprised with that alternative. It's a procedural thing that we need to really put forth. All of our major subjects of ideas will time for people to see them and comment on them. And, you know, and I understand that folks may not have seen it that way, but we can learn from it.
Right.
So, that's what I would say. I would contrast it with other things. There's something else that I think worked a little well in a way that had that.
Yes, you're going to get that in a minute. Okay, thank you. I'm so happy for you. I'm a part of.
You know, I think the focus here is the same thing. My take on it will be a little different. I think that it was a failure to anticipate the numerous sources of stress and strain resulting from the call to return to on campus instruction. Such a step might have generated cohesive policy with sufficient time for broad-based shared governance input.
Given the first part, like the failure to.
Failure to anticipate.
Right.
In some respect, I think we as a board were speaking the switch. We should have been smart enough to figure out that if we're going to have, that we were going to have a call to return to campus. We should have anticipated some of the, not all of the difficulties that we might encounter so that we would have time for a broad-based campus constituency input and the development of a cohesive policy.
So, like what lessons learned here?
Obviously, the same thing we were talking about, but here, the law I wrote down. So, well, my back, I forgot. So, it's the same thing everyone else mentioned. So, what I wrote down was May 11, which probably before that, we finally first talked about the vaccine issue from the most recent. We had a discussion in our board, a very simple motion was on there. We discussed and we figured out what we wanted, how we wanted to make it better. But it was only the trustees initiating it. And then, May 11 was pretty, not that long ago at this point, pretty even to the year. And May 25.
That was the first time.
That was the first time we discussed, yeah. And that was when Marshall and I brought something to the board and insisted that we do it. But the chancellor office had already raised the issue again, and then we got engaged. May 25th, so we had this, we had this simple, it was really bad, lesson paragraph from May 11. And that revised, it might have, just on the, but we. Oh, right, we did, yeah. We took input and revised it and then the board didn't vote on it. And then, we had a motion come out of nowhere and we voted, but Marshall said no one even knew where this motion came from. It was not even the agenda, the agenda was about vaccine mandate. And then, we voted on masks and such. I didn't think that was right. And I think our role should have made it best, but again, the trustees revised the policy in the middle of time, so I don't think it was working. Then there was the shared.
Why does this sound familiar to you?
Yeah. Then there was the shared governance-ish process. And then, the board rejected what was proposed to us. But throughout the whole thing, the administration was too much absent. It was actually providing misinformation. I don't want to call it that, but it was wrong information about the availability of instructors and instructors to teach in person. So, I think that might have been a factor of that final G24 vote. The board, we didn't hear, one, we didn't listen to the people who were being classified decisionally. We got into the weeds. We were writing policies during board meetings when we really shouldn't have do that. We actually have a policy in policy we wrote, goes my mind to say five years ago. It says, there's a first discussion of the board, it goes to BPAP. It comes back, the administration develops these things. So, that didn't happen, we didn't secure our policy. Yeah, like I agree with you there, even though I was removed up since December, we did not tell our superintendent and Marshall, we were removed up since 2020, the return to campus planning, it never happened. And we didn't, as a board, make that something that needed to happen. And I heard from my colleagues, I'm so jealous to hear.
Yeah, it was happening out.
It was, yeah, I mean, I told them, you know, May, here's what's going on with us. They lost their minds when I told them what was going on with us. Because they said, oh, we started shared governance and vaccine mandates in March. We've been planning for that. Yeah, it's never, yeah, so. We didn't, we didn't back the process. Once then, there was a motion that was about a policy. I don't know why we started talking about a motion, it was a policy. Once the policy was brought to us, we didn't back the process or we didn't even back a process to happen. And then, we never held a superintendent to a high standard on COVID since March 2020. I mean, we eventually did, but I don't feel like we, as we see Everett with COVID-19 seriously as much as other places did, so. And we never made that, we never held a superintendent to a high standard. So, you know, remember there was like times for interest in classes in August? That much it didn't happen, but I don't even know about that. So, there was clearly a misunderstanding of how to handle it. And then, throughout since March, it just continued to be wrong. And our role was, yeah, I mean, we didn't listen, which I think one of the other board members said, listening on campus, they were.
Okay.
So, one thing that we're not about, which comes from page 15, Dr. Benjamin's, CEOs, if they want to press fees. And that is the board's understanding of its role. And the board's role in that was that the board, you can write here that there should be no end runs that bypass administration operating on principles of no surprises. And that the CEO, respected the CEO role truly for the board as a whole so that the CEO does not have to respond to any of the board member agendas. So, that was important. And you still have it, wouldn't you?
No, it was. I didn't, you know.
They printed it, just sent my.
Okay, all right. Wow, this was good. This is. You're being self-aware. Maybe I can say that now and then what you should have done, you do, and hopefully now again. Because it's not, I was the same way, I had a problem with this stuff. But I learned it, second time, not second time, the third made the point I couldn't make. But let's hope that's not the case here. So, now, let's talk about the things that worked well. I love the process back. This is a really, really great college. You know that, you have evidence of it. Now, we got to do, go back, knock, knock, you, start back.
So, the first thing I would want to mention is that the switch to online went by all accounts, but we have heard really well. And that was our, that was everybody pushing in and helping to do the right thing. But that wasn't board involvement, so I'm kind of setting it aside. I want to say thank you to all of our faculty and staff and everybody who contributed to that. I think the one that compares to what we just talked about is BP3052, which is our faculty's student relationships policy. We brought that to the board and we used the policy that we have on developing board policies. We brought it to the board, we're going to draft more discussion. We sent it to BPAP, it got lots and lots of discussion on campus.
Then it happened to be 21.
Yes, it got lots and lots of discussion. It went in BPAP, in academic senate, in CSEA. Everybody was discussing extensively. And then, it came back to the board in another draft, we commented on some of those aspects and we all came. and we all came together in a final policy.
What was the name of it?
Faculty-Student Relationships, BP3052. So what I see there is that the process works, and our campus was very much engaged in that process. And so that's what I want to see. And I don't necessarily mean that everything has to start with the board. I do think the board has to be in the situation early so that we don't diverge, so that we're talking about the issues at the same time together, better in the general environment. But that part.
Yes, so you kind of cheat, you just get too busy, too busy.
Well, I want to say thank you.
Okay, just the other, so you said, let's look in, let's look.
I do want to do one that not.
Yeah, I do want to roll the background number two, let's do that one.
Well, I think, one of the things that, well, first of all, I do want to say that as a new trustee to the board, some of that earlier discussion I was listening to and learning a few things for the first time about, you know, when the, when the decisions about masking and the mandate on the current campus learning. But what I think went well was the creation of that campus climate talent hall, I mean, really, because it allowed so many people to be able to share something for the first time. I felt like what they had to contribute was just incredible. I also really feel that, you know, the difficulty that people had, but also the freedom that they had to kind of share some things, or something that really worked well. So that's the one I'll come back to.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to echo what Marshall just talked about, and that was the transition to online instruction really well. It really started in the last school year, but it continued, obviously, throughout this school year. Now, also, I think what Marshall said, that was a whole campus success. I think the administration deserved credit for it happening, but I did. What I saw happening was almost spontaneous leadership among people who weren't necessarily in leadership roles, stepping up and solving a huge problem, doing a, I don't think the board, I would like to say the board deserves some credit for that, but it doesn't. I mean, I guess the only thing we use our credit for, I know we did thank the campus and faculty, the staff, the administration, what was happening at the time, I don't want to put that into the field, but it was really a believable spontaneous leadership that someone deserved to do.
Yes.
I follow up on that. The transition to online instruction was both rapid and successful. And the board role was essentially that of a cheerleader, which can also be translated to stay out of the way, so that, so that those who were engaged would be allowed to do their thing. And, 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 Marshall, I certainly send my thanks to, well, frankly, the creativity of the faculty and the hard work of, of the staff in terms of delivering the technical requirements that made that happen. It's interesting, indeed, that in both cases, for her, there's a lot of common interest in agreeing about what that might be.
I'm going to jump in. Yeah, I had put down the faculty-student relations policy as well, because I agree that, that online teaching, it was really kind of working that way. And faculty and staff were envious of what was going on on campus and in our campus. For what we did direct the impact, I would say that is, you know, what happened with that policy, but I would love to see that was shared governance working. And it is, you know, really hard to see, because I think that there was concern, as the board, delight, we need that policy, you know, how would it, can we respond to it, and individual policy, it would be quite suggesting. So only that could happen, kind of, for us.
A lot of really good things happened in it. Just to leave you there, because, you know, I'm involved around, I got young kids, so I, at SCCC, we feel like everyone breakfasts dinners with friends. But I have to say, the thing that rose to the top, it would bring, you know, is what I said, we'll share, and when we look at it around the students, and you see, you know, just the learning trajectories and goals and the different things that are positive opportunities, despite all the challenges, I said, we'll share that, we had, how many colleges, students transferred, 15. And so as a percentage to the group that was served at the college, that's amazing. And that's to commend the mission that has sustained. So of all the things, I just want to say that that was awesome, and thank you for sharing that, because, you know, I don't need, I heard it, I knew it, you know, you're talking to friends and neighbors, and so that means the cream that goes to the top, and lots of things that people do.
That's a business. In a business, I was, no matter what you, you keep coming, like, you not, you just do whatever you're doing, but they can change the times, the hour classes, probably some impact, but they continue. Yes, sir.
I'm not saying, Saudi was saying the choice to the policy to, 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 just a great thing to do. But the other one along this line is, the money don't like that, the board has zero role, but the money was one, I mean, the administration had zero role, well, except the staff and faculty who produced that business of high quality education, high outcomes, the figures, the statistics, that they can research and found out about it, and the side of it was difficult, so I keep up my message. Yeah, so I think we didn't do anything, we stayed out of the way, but we, you know, our, our employees did an amazing job. I guess we support, we, this is the board over many years, before this year, we never had layoffs, we did what we could to support the employees in the past, so, then they performed well, and then we got the money, because we got it.
Yeah, and, and the characters, based, I'm assuming on your data, on the ones, all the things that have been happening over the, over the years, three years. Okay, I think I heard everybody, one time, second round, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I want to, first of all, just shout out to trustee Agrew for bringing that faculty-student policy, you know, to the fore with our best practices from other campuses, and other campuses. Marshall, okay, they, you know, they looked at what other campuses were doing, and then said, look, we have to be a bit of the, oh, she's working, oh, who needs to do that? So I just want to shout out to them, you know. But the other thing I thought was really good was the cancellation of some of those layoffs. I mean, the people who did public comments were just, I mean, it was, it was almost as in morale turned on a dime in that. And I think that's something to be said, so clearly, the, the, the national funding that we got from the, from the CARES Act and, and others, you know, really helped, but I thought that was really, very good.
Good stuff? Okay, this, this is a good list, I wanted to, one, you left on, on, on everything, because you, but sometimes they say you're going so rad, and you forget that you do good stuff, it's all mixed in, and then all the negatives sometimes can overshadow that, you know, want that to happen, you got it.
Okay, we, a couple, just maybe last week, at the last meeting, we had a PCE for childcare unanimous board decision, we said, no, we want, they got one of our best decisions, even though it seems so small, it's a percent item, and we said, oh, wow, no, we don't want a PCE, we want to reimagine this whole service and better finance it, and those unanimous votes, so. And we heard, I mean, I think, I, I apologize, I know all of us did, but we heard from the community that, hey, don't do this, and we listened. I guess that's my trustee, but she just brought up, it was us listening on the layoffs, you know, even the worst of it, so, listening is maybe our thing to do.
Yeah, so I was, I was going to ask you, now, you had a chance to think about this, the thing about your role in both sides. What do you think you do, what's your behavior like when things go away? What happens when things go away? What, as a behavior, you'd be sitting as a board, when you get, as a board moves off and out of the spirit of, how are you behaving?
Excuse me.
Maybe, maybe I'll leave that as a rhetorical question, just that you think about that.
I'm willing to talk about it.
You're willing?
Okay. Let's see. I think that, and this goes to what all of us have to say, we disagree and go different ways, but we, good governance is where we're essentially an eight-member team with the administration, and I think things go well when we are all pulling in the same direction. We have opinions on how that goes, but it's, it's, we're not separated, we're not disconnected from the administration, but we stay within our walls, and that can be, that can be a hard one to, to find.
All right. So things are part of the conversation.
Yes. I just wanted to say too, that I really love the passion that the board members bring, because I think one of the things that was served is the passion, how these difficulties can be restored. And, you know, so I, I want to, you know, really not dampen or lose that passion in here. But we can be a little, you know, a little more politic and how maybe we visit. But I think, I think you said you meant it conductive, and, you know, so I, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. Judge, respond to this slide.
Um, I think the board is listening, and we did, like, BP3052, we did have a detailed start here, we were expressing a fair level of ideal ideas about what we thought was important, but we were also, I think, making a distinction between us at the policy level of important, and hearing from the campus on the ground about how they saw that play out. And so I think, you know, that there's that need to don't get too involved in the details probably, and that there's a corresponding, that we need to communicate clearly what you're thinking and why. I think both of those came together, so we listened, we thought, we thought, right.
What, what month was that?
Um, it was through, it was through spring.
Okay.
Yeah, we finished the first one.
Okay.
When we started, it was, actually.
It took months, it took months, it took months. I mean, and that's part of the doctrine, we're not starting too, not wanting to be on the wrong.
So I want to remind you of something. The last time I did a retreat, okay? You did a vision statement. I'll tell you that. And I want you to see what you said. Do you remember that day, you were all down, feeling somewhere, I don't know where you were. We will be a student-centered board that recognizes we are human with the ability to forgive each other and to treat each other with respect, proactive listening, practice active listening, and be willing to reflect and listen before taking action. Focus on academic access and issues we can have an impact on. Understand the role of trust and consequences of not maintaining trust with each other. Protect this college. Direct the CEO as a board and not as individuals, and have a common understanding of the role of the trustee. Do you remember that day? Before my time, I was sitting. That, that was what you agreed on that day. I think you took it to a board meeting, I can't remember, but you're saying the same things today. And then I'm going to go to the next page, because you made individual commitments that day. Jonathan, you said, so as individuals, what commitment do you make to fulfill a vision? Trustee Agrew said, build a better personal relationship with these board members, better understand, you remember where, you remember this is coming back to you?
I do remember.
Yeah, where they are coming from, understand that we agree on and respect this other page. You have come a long way, it seems to me, I'm just thinking about what was going on at that time. Trustee Croninger, listen, try to make sure comments of others are understood and ask questions to clarify. Trustee Vayardo, keep missions, vision, and values at the forefront, thinking when making decisions. Trustee Haslam said, meet with any trustee to discuss any issue or behavioral question after honest feedback, and accept and hold any aspect of that conversation confidential. Trustee Miller, not to interrupt, and instead patiently and actively listen, how many times, what's the joke up here? When other board members are speaking. And trustee Parker, you were kind of new there, I guess. Participate board training, go through the CCLC access and trustee Chaper without over impacting the board professional development. So those were the things you said that day. And that was, let's go back and look at the date. The date is July 14, 2021, this is on June 14, 2019, two years ago, one month, because
And I just have to say that, in fact, that I think, from so vast board, not, and the fact that we had to split both, it was very contentious, and I feel like a previous board would have personally attacked each other, and I just, I have not seen that here, and it's so appreciated that while there's disagreement, it's respectful, and it's a pleasure to help out and build.
Other reactions before I move to the next thing. Do you think it worked, please, Jeff?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Dr. Vineyard, I think that, and I think it's true, to what I saw, that, you know, and I, and goodness, just send it to Ronnie, and he's been here for four more years, because of the, so, 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 really, that whole steer, that whole capacity is close to your heart, but I, what I seen last year, and I can empathize with you, because you're looking at all of us consumed, and I know that we've all been living two different parts of the body, and so you spoke at the agenda, so everybody's coming into it, right, with their context, and you're getting your home, you're getting an explanation, and all the number of things, right? I came in fresh off schoolhouse with hundreds of children into a orbiting, because I'm talking family toward an apple house garden, doing our thing, and so the issues are real, right? But the way everything's going is different, because of the seasons in their life. Us, in this age of seasons, we have no choice but to go in there and serve and just do. And so for me, we're in the presence of children, out of, not the babies, we give, share, enjoy, and hope every day. So I, for me, I, I entered, I mean, half or, you know, overflowing, because I'm in the presence of, you know, life and totally joy, so, and that's a true privilege and honor for me, to have that in my life. But I recognize that some of us were not, the, the, obviously, you can skip the Zoom, you know, if you're alone, and I, last year, I was really, so much loving, and, because we have to, we have no choice, our children need us, and we have to go, right? So, so that's something that I, that I, I knew, and I gave a lot of, empathizing, gave a lot of grace, and my folks are not working at this, from the same point, because we're in the same season, right? And that drastically affects the recovery, because you're human, and you're, you're human.
Yeah, and that's what I like about your vision statement. At the beginning of it, you said, you realize what you're doing. So you want to do all of the same. Other comments? So, twenty, so none of them left in here, and we're going to look at some of these things this afternoon, we don't want to go into more detail on the agenda. But what are some of your critical issues? As you just, I know you've been doing some thinking about this, and then now that you've done some reflecting, just off the top of your head, what are some of the things you see as critical for next year? And I know, well, don't do the top of your head right now, but so what you think, right now, again, now. Do these things go? Okay. Oh, trustee Miller, is it either? We should do the question, trustee, and you can be second. All right, what you got?
Why? Why?
I, since you have one, just give me two off of this.
Two, okay, well, first would be return to campus. More than it, back then.
Okay, what's the second one?
I'd say second one is bond.
What about bond?
Well, it's facilities. If, but whether, do I have a bond, do you have a bond? How are you, bond, then? Is better type.
Okay, that's the other, two, tattoo.
Uh, yes. Number one is hiring and effective on boarding of the next president, Renee. Better one. And then the second one was, I read from Mackenzie's last letter, and I flipped on all the notes and saw where she gave. Effective use of the Sony with an IT voice, this is a couple of decks.
Is that the second one? Okay, effective use of the Mackenzie gift.
Right. With an IT voice, this is a couple of decks.
This is Spanish, well, I didn't hear, would respect, all the last, no, would respect the structure of the deficit. The Mackenzie gift, it would respect the structure, the light on that. Okay. All right, next. Yes, now.
So I don't, I don't want to repeat, because these were some of mine too, but two old ways. One is our, have, you know, this is familiar, having a long-term vision for the college that we can deploy the money towards, especially around the issues of enrollment and programs and services and Resolution 18 and anti-racism and campus climate. These are the two areas we should be looking at for our long-term vision and using the money, so that. And then, uh.
And that's what I'm, I'm, we're all in this, so. So long-term vision is regarding the Mackenzie gift.
Well, yeah, having a long-term vision on these two areas, and then deploying the gift to meet those goals, I guess. If, we, we don't know where we're going for the next ten years of college. So how do we deploy money of that amount without knowing that? And we have our Resolution 18, which is about campus climate and anti-racism. And we have, that has a commitment to dedicate funds. And we have our enrollment issues, you know, sixteen percent down or something like that. So coming up on those new programs and services, reform for promise, however we can to improve people.
How come any of them have been attributed?
You were supposed to give me two, it sounds like two.
Oh, no, it's two, it's like enrollment, and then these are the things that are in enrollment, and then. Long-term vision and power.
I'm gonna put enrollment, in line of the plan. I'll continue the plan. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna put my dots next to return to campus plan.
Okay.
And then also the, um, the onboarding of team leadership.
Okay.
I'm kind of subbing with this, but the, the enrollment issue, we have had a serious drop in the portion of students that come from in this area. And I think that we need to focus on a strong outreach and return for those who have left us and the, you know, like a return to the campus for students who, for education, not in the context of the virus, but in terms of bringing people back from our history to college. Because I think that relates to bond, I think that relates to our essential long-term vision, what we do. And so it's subbing under that. And I also, this one is not on here, but I think we should learn from what went well in our moved online and use it and benefit from it. There are huge colleges now that are online, for-profit colleges, with hundreds of thousands of students. And basically, they are subbing students away from us, who are a better, cheaper alternative. And so we need to be thinking about that, that probably fits in our long-term vision, it's not closing.
I, I don't know if it's a critical issue, if you could see a more of an opportunity. We know that student outcomes that are being programmed, or districts banned with the A to G requirement in college courses, so. I would say, opportunity for 2021 is to prepare, we, we're gonna do that a lot. So find all those free spots, since the days before, yes, they would talk about elevating these things we know we do well, because the students are gonna come in, need the support, access our, and I'm looking at these are amazing, computer science, biology, STEM. All of that, all students are not gonna choose a pretty good STEM, but I firmly believe all students should have the option to enter STEM career. So I think that's an opportunity, that's a thing. Um, and the second one would be.
Wait, hold on, can you give me that, just one sentence?
So an opportunity to look at local student outcomes, so that the college can do what we are making well. Um, and the second one would be a, a support, an opportunity to further support the wealth with mental health therapists, cancer, accessibility, for everybody to feel like they have a friend connected to talk to. So I think that might be the social. Will be, this one to be really critical and timely.
We are very, very much, I'm a piece of, yes, it's a hard, thank you guys, I'm learning.
I mean, learning from our experience. We just had a, a still have pandemic experience. What can we learn in that? In terms of bringing students back, deciding how we need, from being face-to-face, will we do a hybrid version? What should we learn about my sources, what sorts of hybrid situations do we work? Will work best for the student, some students do very well on online stuff. Other students, not, not so much. What about work from home options? What have we learned from this experience? What actually functions better if our employee does not have to find a parking spot? What, what doesn't work out? I think we need to spend some time honestly looking at that and inviting the campus students in that discussion. And did it for everything everybody said.
But you know, other people have already said this. And, and I'm not saying it shouldn't happen, because it, it has to. All right, Rob, we're back to you.
Yeah, might allow them to add another one, because.
What?
I don't think it's been mentioned, the Mackenzie fund convention, but we still have the IRF fund to deal with. And that is something that, some of these issues, we issued the outline, are long-term, but the IRF has a deadline. So I see that as a, as a important, pretty good issue with us. Marsha has emphasized, it's a board meeting, we need to look at that with a eye to our long-term strategies. I think we can almost be looking at that at the same time.
Same time you're looking at, like, the kids, we're gonna talk about this after you.
Yeah, so I think the two of them, uh, I'd go as, more of one big pot of money.
Well, okay, I didn't have before.
What's that?
I thought, not so very inspiring, this is.
The, uh, the issue of solving our, our structural deficit has been mentioned, but I am pushing the idea as well, and I'm saying, we agree, that we try to do this in a way that do not need us to go out. Or possibly.
Okay. All right, so, I'm gonna put out, just quickly, so those, a lot of those things are new, and not on your list of lectures, and that's where I was trying to get us. And so now we're gonna look at what you had last year in general. So board goal one, and what you said, so think about this list. And so what we need to determine, and I think you can do this very quickly, is whether or not these things, any of these things would fit under these goals, or if a new goal is required. You said you wanted to carry over all four of the big goals you have. So would some of these things fit in one new big goal, or would they fit in here? You see what I'm trying to do here? And we'll add a new goal if we need to, but if some of these things are more like actions that fit under what you already have, we can just, that makes it easy, okay? So let's just run through them. So board goal one has to do with fiscal sustainability. I'm just gonna go through the four, and then we'll go back and go through our list. Two has to do with student safety and wellbeing. Three has to do with equity. And four has to do with your school of extended learning. All right, so then we're gonna go back then up to, so we see what, so keep those four, make a little note for yourself. So one is fiscal sustainability. Two, safety and wellbeing. And three, equity. And four, SEL. So we're gonna put numbers by these, or fairly, we'll have to come up with some new words. So return to campus, would that fit in either of the four big goals we already have? Safety, so that was the goal two for this one, right? Solid construction of deficit, that's goal one. Decision on bond measure? Probably one, okay. Yeah, we'll have, yeah, so it'd be included there. Hiring, onboarding your next president? We don't have one on board effectiveness. I think we probably need one on board effectiveness, especially with that activity we did. And we could put that one, we could put this one in board effectiveness. Is that all, can we just buy your home or governments? Or something, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to make it as annual, but.
We can show it one year. Yeah, we can show it one year, I think it'll be okay, because we're gonna put some other good stuff in there. And we're gonna call it board government, right? Because that's, because speed will be massive for your business. For a period of time, you need to have that. So that they know where they're going, what you're thinking about. That's gonna be a new number five, but we're gonna tell them, we gotta sit, we don't wanna go past six. Effective use of the Mackenzie gift? One, right, okay. One or three? Okay. Okay, uh, long-term vision, okay, that's the same, there's one, are we here as well? Okay. And how this goes together? Enrollment management, focus on how we do the turn, well, enrollment management. And this is probably.
I'm trying to justify this, because it's not about. Can we justify this? I don't think we should use enrollment management. Enrollment management has a fiscal component that's really important, but it's not just.
Exactly, the other thing is, if you can seek absence from your goals, is probably the most important thing, you don't have a goal on education, on academic, and student success. You got your money, you got your, yeah, kind of, let's see how, let's look at the wording on it. You're gonna have to do something with that, I can imagine, let's see. Equity, monitor, and support values and strategies that support student success. I think we need to make it a more educational, we'll do some rewording of that. Because you, the.
I'm looking at that. Just at the front, and then equity and all that stuff.
Right, it'll be in there.
Can I, can I just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I see the success as a.
Right, yes, and equity's part of that.
It's like, they were like, Marsha said, because the enrollment issue would just, fiscal component to it. And right now, particularly, we have lost students because of the pandemic. We need to get them back, and they can understand why we're losing students, mostly for reasons other than pandemic, so. I'm not sure what it's.
Sounds like a spirit of these. Could we make it work in three?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so here, we're putting three. And, uh, and then learning what was, okay, so here, what about this one? About the transition. This could be a three. Now, we put the return to campuses too, but this one's. Do you look at the outcomes? And all of this was determined, what their, handling managers and all that kind of stuff. Sounds like three, right? And support, nothing help of students. Wellbeing, wellbeing too. And determine what we can learn from the pandemic.
Not giving the new boards.
Let's, let's put three, let's put, uh, three and five here. And then the corner of the, of her. Would be. Okay, boy, that was good. Do you have anything else on your list? Anything that needs to be here?
Dr. Benji, I'm looking at three columns, so we'll target for those activities.
Yes.
So are some of these items, the ones that are maybe moved into the third column, those activities we're targeting?
So here, here we go. Yeah, it's real mid, it's real mid. So now we're gonna go back. So we got our new stuff, right? So what I did next was to list the activities you had already. And I have, this is the first, um, I think, yeah, it's the first in-person, non-zoom retreat that I've facilitated in obvious time. And I am missing Zoom. And I'm telling you why. Cause I could just type, I could be typing on this app and you could just see right there. You know, it would just be right there. I wouldn't have to be running around doing, I don't mind my own other one getting a little excited. But it's very different. I'm having adjusting issues today at my own true. Cause it's, uh, different with that. You see what we gotta do to do it, I could be, okay.
Dr. Benji, I think you just made clear what Robert was saying, or was Peter. I think what Peter was saying about, um, what is it about this Zoom environment that we can really learn, change from and redeploy in our new normal? So I think.
I think that would be a really good activity. If you guys have folks like you dealing with relationships and want to just get folks in a long venue, chip or to talk about it and say, and they're busy and students too. What are students doing about that? Cause sometimes people don't wanna come back and work. They're saying, we like this, we don't wanna come back at first. So, so now, let me get where I'm going here. So goal one, these are the activities you have. And what I need you to do now, so you know, we've added some activities here, right? So these are just gonna be sliding in. Trying to make this easy, trying to stay on time and allow us out of time. We're twelve minutes, but I think we can do it. We're gonna just run through these. These are the financial ones you have current activities. We are going to add to this. Structural deficit. Yeah, okay. And then we're gonna add something to bond measure. Long-term vision, you're going to give, I'll give stuff, so I'm gonna go there. Possibly what we can learn from COVID, I don't know. These are the two you have. I need to know if you want to, if you think you're okay with these. Cause sometimes with these things, once they become institutionalized, if you feel that any of this is institutionalized, it's automatic. It's just, it's part of who you are now, it just happens. We don't have to have them because it's happening. So this first one, and I'm gonna, show hands, right, four hands, going away. And you're gonna keep track on the map. It's a zoom item, my bad. So this first review budget to assure inclusion of increased investments and strategies that support student success and equity dollars. And you know you got an equity section too. You wanna keep that one as an activity for this year? Or you want it to go away? All right, raise hands. If you want to say, if you wanted to say, raise your hand. All right, that was set. Be review monthly reports on the status of budget assumptions and significant developments in anticipated funding. You want to say or can't?
It can say because Lindsay doesn't, so, cause it has to be part of that part of the.
Well, it didn't happen until we made it or we can plan, but it will happen.
It's, it's, it just seems the best one that is, I'm going to get it anyway now.
I'm beginning institutionalized. It started because we did this, so.
Right, and now it's part of what you do. It's part of what we do, we're happy to move back. Okay, so we're not gonna. Good, yeah, all right, here we go.
I'll keep doing it.
Yeah, you keep doing it, all right. This is safety and wellbeing. You had three things. Monitor strategies to offer a gradual return to in-person instruction with the lowest possible risk to faculty, staff and students. If you want to keep that, raise your hand. Okay, it stays. Support policies, procedures and practices to ensure that the health and safety of SBC students, employees and when affected, the community shall be of the highest priority. We keeping that one? Maintain emergency response capabilities. Is that institutionalized?
Well, so can I ask you maybe this these year? So I've been very passionate about this for many years now. But we never sort of held out the cybersecurity component of the response capability. So if, do we feel indeed that that needs to be clarified more? Or that that is included in app and sugar cybersecurity? Because I do think that because we don't see the cybersecurity unless it affects you. Um, we don't know, but do you think that that's allowed in your team?
I would call you man to, to just please want to come in, sorry.
I would just say, I think it's happening very well, but we don't hear that. So maybe a report or something from time to time. I don't think it's a goal because I think we're doing and we don't need to do it.
Oh, right, right. Because we get the emails, we'll go to the training, you know, so it is institutionalized. But I do not, it's not called the cybersecurity, that might be something. Well, yeah, those are.
You know, we are, um, we are working on it. And we're doing a lot of it, but we don't have a full, complete, end-in-stand. We're working on that right now, actually.
And so, and I do, and I'd like to see how then that needs to be supported with budgeting to staff and if we get the. And, cause that's the reality of, I've been done, I've done a lot of work around this in the last couple of years in Bradley College, so. I really ended up to, both to the room and obviously the dean, but to where does it fit? To make sure that the resources are in place so that we can prepare to prevent. And also God forbid responding to that too, but everything's on the preventative basis. I really want to support that.
All right, I'll ask again, since we've had this, this discussion. How many of you want to keep this list or things institutionalized? So if you wanna keep it, raise your hand. Okay, we do on that. All right, we're going to the next one. The equity, three things. Receive regular progress reports. I left that space, sorry, I'm gonna put space there. On disaggregated student access and success data and the vision for success goals. Is that institutionalized? Can you get those, no?
I think the opportunities because of the, you know, you can get data statistically stupid. But the, what I think is this is what it buys where the data points are coming from. And so there's, so the, um, systems, right?
Right, I think, don't you have to send every report to the state every year on visual success progress? Are you still doing that?
Well, we should have institutions set standards and usually connect and bring the vision for success. And we do have to report.
And they go to the board automatically.
Yes, that works, I succeed though.
So up to you.
I, my, my thinking and keeping is that there's data that's one, you know, and it's okay. Like when you were in P12, you get your summit in high state star. You're like, great, this is what we did summit in. Where are the data that can inform our decision making and all of that? And that's the part where as a college, we haven't received that, right? So what do the outcomes look for? This is for example, Mercy, right? That's an expensive program, but we're not gonna get rid of it. So we need to make sure that that program was supported, had a recent, um, X Y Z, right? And so I think that the opportunity in this area has always been the type of data we get. Maybe there's so many different systems to gather the data and so your systems to provide for the reporting and regulatory things that are in statute. But there's also data that is going to inform us as we're making these decisions into student impact, right, teaching and learning. And that's where I think it's just an opportunity for all of the else, right? Members now of the city college, I would wanna keep it if we can comment on what does that mean, or is it possible to function as strength in all people?
I would do that. Wow.
I, I would keep it because, um, although we do have what I guess is at least an annual report on the dashboards, we do need so much more. And I think that's what Veronica is saying. Um, for example, I have asked a number of times about what is our student success and access based on, um, income basically, I mean, not directly, but your, your economic.
Social.
Because I think that perhaps even for people in our students, we don't have that. Vision for success goals, I don't think are necessarily recorded specifically. It's just dashboard stuff. So I think we need to get it recorded.
Okay.
You know, people say disaggregated was the term that we.
Yeah.
Yeah, we called it for me, for not to suggest.
It sounds like we were trying to tweak it a little bit though, because we, um, I think that some of it here, they want to say they're going to assess student access and success data and think, oh, we're already providing that. Um, but actually we're asking for some data that's a little bit different than family data. So I, I think that, um, that's a little.
Okay, do you know whether or not? And this is a goal this year. Do you feel that you got information you got? Do you even know?
The dashboard.
The dashboard, but you want it more, okay.
Well, can you, can you, can you, can you?
Sure.
Yeah, and we need, um, Quincy Scott's information. One of the, one of the reasons that she had for some of the choices that they have that were on whole, having them decided is because they didn't have these, um, data that's important outcomes. So there was a metric for measuring what these people look like they're trying to do. So that's why I think this is really important because it'll give, and they wanna see that, those metrics of our success.
All right, hands for keeping this one. We're there, okay. Monitor implementation of resolution eighteen. I don't know what they, it's, I'll send you now. Oh, it's your.
Why come back to America?
Do you? Okay, as long as you know. In favor of keeping this one, can I ask you? Okay, thank you. We, we need to put a little, put a little on there, but we need to say what they said. All right, support efforts to identify, please. Support efforts to identify and rule any systemic inequities or disputes policies and practices to facilitate fundamental institutional change. Wow, that's a big one. You want to keep that one here? Okay. All righty, we're almost done, we're gonna go forward. You had only two things here. Support, support community demands for robust and diverse course offers and state-supported non-credit programs. You want to keep it, we don't have anything on here about SEL. Sure.
I just really never understand what this is all, like I support SEL, but I don't see why one project is the goal and the other dozens we have.
It probably should be incorporated into the others. That's about it, cause then if you go like a three hundred, but not ready, it's, I think it's a very, we're gonna incorporate it in order to.
Yes, it could be three, but I think the second one about expanding the access is, is something we haven't done. And obviously we had interruption problem, but.
I think the reason was there, standing back to, uh, ten years ago, when there was a delivery that was to subordinate this, for us to establish it as a goal, as an indication that our will was to be, establish it and make a robust goal.
Okay, so, yes.
I guess, just to go off of that, you know, one of the things I had mentioned earlier was, you know, our enrollment. And we had a tweet last September when one of our items, one of the needs or services or programs that need to deliver to raise the moment, because we're not doing it unless people need out there. They were good ideas, someone said cannabis certificate, so you just keep it. So I think that's maybe where this can go more is not just SEL, but all of it. I mean, a lot of them might be SEL, but all the different programs and services.
Yeah, well, you know, since you went out to, and then with Washington. It was an SEL, cause they were probably going, okay, all right, all right. Okay, so it sounds like you want to keep these, but will it incorporate in the appropriate finding of the other law? Or do you want to keep it as a separate law? And SEL or incorporate SEL?
I, I, I would definitely, I could definitely keep the second bullet. I don't know if we need to, if those is institutionalized, except what we would ask for, for last year. And I would, I would, I would keep the second.
Keep the second bullet incorporated in the appropriate other.
So, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I'm looking at the goal and, you know, we have activities and targets.
I know.
And one of the targets is improve the registration process, which I think is involved. Like we get a lot of complaints from the public.
Is still not?
Oh, no, we still get the same.
I thought we were gonna work that out, okay. Okay.
So my, my thinking and being supportive that they should still be a standing goal is there is a lot of intentional progress to have the school of extended learning be under the Santa Claus College as opposed to like in minutes there. And so when you think of the important programs and how it was supposed to be, especially in the GED and transitional work that happens there. Or goes to get access to, into your school and onward. It's, it's like a, it's a huge, like mini college within our college, which is why I think the school of extended learning is, is this.
So we need an activity then, um, what, what were we just talking about?
Registration.
Registration. Add it here. That's about access. For access to. Do we need to call it that or just assume that it's understood in the admin system?
I like the support access to, but can you just suggest to the department?
All right, so. And then. It could be, so you gotta decide whether you want it to be the standalone goal or whether you want those activities incorporated into, would it be equity? If there's a finance piece, it would go there.
Well, is that work really happening, ready to have it? Is that what's kind, that was our, like, onboarding and, you know, so if, I'm not asking you.
No, I don't think.
No, but I would imagine that improving registration is access to Santa Claus College as it stands with mission, vision and values for all programs. Um, because it's SEL has positions, but then the, this campus also has issues. I know even the same stat that I'm in, which I'm sure that. And I do, I'm one of the people that will talk about that seem to. But I don't know that that's a lack of, it, it's just, I think with the infrastructure this thing, not exactly this thing, it's just, it's infrastructure that's been offered to us, right? With the cancer.
It's a bunch of things. Part of it is infrastructure, part of it is the fact that part of the registration process lies with the state of the whole and part of it's local. Uh, and also there's personal relationships too, so they're all the same.
So we heard on this, so for you to see a show is for those of you who want to keep SEL as a separate goal.
Yeah, I just say, I do.
Okay. It goes to so that it's going to.
Um, well, um, well, should we recommend for achieving our objectives and getting bucks on purpose?
We, we're gonna make this work, you'll be surprised. All right, so I think we've got enough for a draft for some goals, some goals from you. So what trustee has one, do we want to have maybe two volunteers? What, I want to work to bring, get a draft together and maybe with staff, maybe with the staff first, maybe, and then work with two volunteers to agree who we want to run in kindness and presenting it in, you have an honesty?
Art, you have to remind me. It's the last question.
No. Oh, you do one that, I mean, you're done.
What's her day, like the policy?
No, I don't know. Art, art, holiday of the earth.
Arts. So would you get two volunteers and then do, you get.
What does the policy stand for, like that?
It doesn't say.
So let me understand.
I know you have one.
The objective here, which is to integrate this with that.
Yes, to come up with your goals for this year.
The one goal, what we haven't really talked about, and I may be a little off, but it seems to be, there, there may be confusion of the issue of governance and what, what participatory governance means and what our role in relation to that means. Is that sufficient to create a goal this year for us?
For us? Well, we're gonna create a board for this one.
Oh, okay.
If, if you don't live.
I couldn't see that far.
Okay, this is the new goal.
New goal, okay.
And so you want to make sure top of that participatory governance here, something of that, right?
Okay, then my concern is.
And I am a little bit, sorry. All right, there are other things. Look at this one more time that you think need to be here. Does not include even here or in one part of that. I'm an person that you want excellent work to do. I have a dream and for thinking deeply and critically about themselves individually and about themselves individually. We are going to take a break. You're gonna tell me. So John will talk to you. Is there?
We have a volunteer.
Okay, okay. We shall be at that. It's lunchtime.
So is, is that our work?
Yes, and it's gonna be a work at lunch once you guys get started Saturday.
Yes, it's not quite here yet.
Oh, it's not quite, yeah. So it's break time, it's a lunch.
So anyway, let's go get ready.
You can do who you are, what you do, and now, and we'll have to do the same. Maybe Jeff will do it again.
Hi, I'm Jasmine. I'm assistant superintendent president.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I know what you do. I'm Jasmine, assistant chief superintendent president.
You started during COVID remote?
Started during COVID. I'm just coaching, or, yeah, I took it for a year.
Yes, we have. We have a team. So.
Okay, I'm Mike Shannon, head of HR. We jar set.
Hope's the title of vice president. Vice president.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kathy Stas. I've been here since July sixth. And I'm very, very happy to be here. And it's a pleasure to listen to you this morning. An honor to have the opportunity, a lot of things that I appreciate, everything that I can see. And I'm, I guess at the moment, I'm acting president just for a very brief time. And I'm looking very much forward to working with foundations.
We know each other.
We do. We have some history. And I'm, I'm the virtual executive vice president for these six months. So that's it. And nice to meet you all.
I'm Lindsay Moss. I'm the vice president of business services. I'm officially now the longest-standing vice president, which is kind of embarrassing because it's not like I've been here that many years. I have been with the college for over eight years now, so a little while, because I was a controller before. And in the last year, I've been working on a lot of things related to COVID.
We know.
Yeah, all kinds of things. And working a lot with, this is my, Mike Shannon is my best friend in negotiations. We spend a lot of time at the table together, helping each other out. And yeah, I, I do a lot of whatever we can have done, especially with facilities and, you know, HVAC stuff. I've become an expert on HVAC and how, you know, that's impacted by pandemics and stuff like that. So that's me.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anselm of the Long Bay, but really it's been an honor and pleasure to be here. Kind of coming full circle, so you know this already, but I'll say it anyway. Board of Racer in Santa Barbara with P. V. DiLacalina, San Marcos. Transferred here to City College for my first couple of years. And I was within the board bios and I actually, that year this summer, it hasn't started that fall. So I've been around quite a long time. So I've been on the C L A at that time now here. I'm also very connected with the community as part of my heritage, well, as a founder. More gaps than mom and I start, you know, next year. When I present that unit from President, with my name from U. C. O. College. So it, it is still good to be back here and to inform the students, especially students of other and other universities. So thank you.
My name is Dean Davis. I've been in college for quite a few years. So I was very smart for college, act the, act as a president, any other areas. I run IT, but we're very, very busy, as you imagine. And look forward to, uh, to serve college. We also use.
Hi, I'm Luke. I work in my IT department. Basically, we run around and make sure any physical, electronic device in your offices or classrooms are all running. We also dealt with transitioning to Z. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Should we, distribution of samples?
I'd like to talk to them.
Why should you also? Oh, sorry. Robert Miller. I joined the board in March of two thousand and twenty. Place that was, I'm pretty little leader. My district basically did that. And I'm sorry, but the board member are.
Very.
So she resigned that year, so I worked for twice. A retired lawyer and I didn't really know a lot about San Francisco College when I was asked to apply for the position. I learned about San Francisco College. Reason I was interested was because of the students it serves. And I'm really honored to be able to do this.
I'm Kate Parker. I am the representative of Area Seven, which includes Mesa, San Marcos, the area that's in the west side of LA. And the, the reason I ran, I spent twelve years at San Robert by a school board. And I was looking for a place that was more calm. I'm afraid about, you know, education's been a huge, important part of my life. I lead office and I'm library director. And I actually went to S. C. C. A. Little Home Institute way back in the day. So it was, it just made an apple's every.
I'm Hannah DeFrest, and I am a retired professor, well, professor nurse to San Barbara, about the building. And I was asked to run by several people for a couple of years. And then finally, once I retired in twenty nineteen, I thought, well, it's likely allocated into. But also I have been so impressed with San College, renowned students from U. C. S. B. And even our students come over here for maybe their first job or get professional training. And we have one of our students who's a professor there. And so there, and also I've experienced what this campus offers, a part of the community I've been able to access and do to associate with. Also, that's here. So I found the place to be very rewarding. And I thought I was gonna, you know, take some classes and, you know, but once I decided that I was going to run and won. You know, I really have an exciting, but I do expect it to be the, the sort of milestone that it's, like, certainly been. And it is an exciting learning experience and I'm just happy to be so involved here and committed trustees, I'm a local candidate. I'm just excited to be here. I've only been on board since November. Since I was like, my first move was at the channel. Anyway, December. So I'm new, I'm still learning, but, you know, these are challenging times and I feel.
That's a very good start. Hi, everybody. My name is Robert and I was elected board in November twenty fourteen. I had just been still by the house, making San Barbara very good time. I was just on and changed it up. It really brought your, I was at the time, and my district I was in the branch. So the reason I ran is to ensure that my community have our expectation, especially as in around the San Francisco College. I would like to allow this to play the, the responsibility and, and we had lots of issues that we, we were going to do. So that's why I ran. I'm also, I'll support out of this, so I'm, that's what I do is a big job now. The general manager of specialist. Yeah, love it. And second turn now, so, yeah.
Marshall Broner, and I've been with the board since December twenty ten. So here are my interests here. Longer term. Um, I, I have been assisting that challenge. But it's more time, you remember, that we forgot to mention something else about. So, hold that.
September, I served as the chair of this office. And I arrived and I learned how to deliver a quick drive in the fall, I think, so. Probably around the, the month. So. Remember, two thousand and ten, the Washington, that was from the group. Lisa, Lisa, Matt. We can do, we can do so much. But my religion wasn't, is our, our message is the growth, they got. I'll make it right. I'm the current acting executive director of Public Affairs Association. It is, uh, can I be, can I be sure? So back to, back to business.
And so now we go into fun part. I put a scale up, that's the basic adjustment. So, uh, so we got time out. So you may be able to go with these things, but then you still strip your service. So let's make some work from here.
I was prepared to introduce myself practically all day. We reached online family, which is because of the process of, you know, it's all.
No, I mean, yeah, you don't owe you. Okay, I'm not, I'm gonna do this to my students. So, yeah, I'm gonna stand up, she's calling the time. And I didn't even realize it until I got here and Cornelia was just talking to me. She's like, you're our controller and you got to the county with this call. And I'm like, oh, my God. Okay, so we have two pieces to talk about in regards to the budget. The adopted budget itself and just projections, like, there are two items in describing to. I do have a bit I want to describe, and then when we'll carry on in the session one half. So with the adopted budget, I don't think need to put up on the screen, but we'll see, feel like in a certain point. So with the adopted budget, it's, it's very, very early for us to be presenting adopted budget for this time. But we did want to get some of the critical changes that came from the major buyers that adopted June state budget. Or, I know the COLA increase, one of the, that one, so. This is a very, very early version. We're gonna have a lot more changes to the adopted budget based on all this information we get from the state and parts of the remainder of the June budget items. There are a lot of one-time ones coming, so there is restricted funding sources. A lot of new ones that we don't understand, how to, how to, how to, so those will be moving to our some. Okay? So for the adopted budget, the primary things you're gonna see that are different in here from what you saw just two weeks ago, the tentative budget, is an increase in COLA. So COLA was four percent, four point zero five, not five point zero seven percent. So that's an increase of eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, when assumptions is going from three point three million dollar COLA to four point three million dollar COLA. And that, of course, will restart all the compensation or anything to see now. The other big item that I noted in assumptions is that they have slated that we receive the government for maintenance. So that's special projects. They were telling us over three million in May, and now we're at over five million dollars per. Yes, it's very big. We just see plenty of these small after those funds. Uh, related to COLA increase, I adjusted our appropriation contingencies. If you recall, that's where we replaced the COLA, same amount of COLA. At, at this point in time, just to ease a good part of the negotiations process, to see where those are, where they ran. Discuss any other strikes, probably just that COLA. So right now, it's just slightly appropriation. Brand must have been here for a little while. We did that a couple of years ago last time, I was just saying COLA. And we're not very well, they've ups the years, the ground sack, probably not those funds. It is, it's in the right now, under appropriation contingency. So that's a four point one, same as COLA. I noticed, if I'm starting, right on page. Hey, number eighteen, I have a typo. There's a typo for appropriation on that. I didn't update the same four point one one. But it is four point one one, but it's not, it's not.
Remove the that number? We have a third.
No, that one is just the COLA.
No.
That's just the COLA. Super similar number. It seems like everything's four one. But we're talking about, yeah, no, that's the COLA. That's five point three percent that COLA.
Yeah, so.
Let's get to that. We'll spend a lot of time talking about that, only a. So one other minor adjustment in the dock budget from tentative is that, uh, an increase to IT refresh budget. Seven hundred and two thousand dollars. The big increase is four hundred thousand in the tentative budget. But we're really at a certain point where we have allocated more funds, right, to refresh it and drop them down to the zone. And they're not cooperating that way and watch to draw, communicating with that in last across two weeks, increase that up. So those are the primary changes besides, uh, we updated the rental of facilities, major certified. We include the person we're hiring, the special coordinator, person who hired their product possibly. And the other things I have mentioned impact the equipment funds, the burden, extend the IT refresh. That's page thirteen, page twenty-nine, sort of, and the destruction fund, that's also a burden. So that's page fourteen, twenty-nine, thirty. So most of that is the same. So I'm going to go through every one. Uh, the other page that we did update was page twenty-eight, is the reserve balance page. The reserve balances did have an error in that that we had in the last board meeting. Uh, so we went through and fixed that. Uh so we went through and fixed that. The balance error was in the adjusted budget this year. So it was rolled over into next year incorrectly. And that's now corrected across all of our budget documents and projections as well, to be accurate. So if you look at the research uh page twenty eight, it'll show you the uh nineteen twenty actual reserve balance. And then what we're expecting our adjusting balance to be. And then that rolled into the twenty one twenty two document budget. And that's where you see one of the four million dollar numbers you see.
Five point four or is it four point three?
The five point four was the budget map. This is where we landed it. And the four point three is the balance. For nineteen twenty.
And then it went out because our budget went down, but partly some of the total was the same, but that minimum reserve.
Right. That line is a total designated twenty one million and nineteen and twenty. And that is tied to our expenditures. So we do fifteen percent of our expenditures. That goes virtually that much. That's right. So that's actually all I have on the budget. Yeah, I want to do questions on the budget and then we'll talk about the projections where I'm sure you'll have a lot more discussion in my half.
So the rejected adopted budget, I think that was just I need to get part twenty four. Um is that maybe one three is contingency? Four point.
Four point one million contingency is included as the uh revenue and expense, but that's a zero. So it doesn't impact reserves too a lot, but it's a chunk of money that is not spent in that sense. It's in seven. It has been said in the appropriation contingencies um leader object or expense, but it shows as an expenditure. Just like any of our other major objects. Right. And I what I'm saying is it is. It's spent on anything particularly identifying. Correct. We need to do the negotiation of what, yes, that's correct. And then.
The uh yeah, we decided to use something we didn't have this.
That's correct. Let's say we did nothing with the four point one million. We wanted to, I don't know, save it. It would increase that balance above the five.
Would you?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thanks. Um another question we had was uh when we look at the certificates salaries. They're up by one.
Where were they?
Where are you looking? I'm sorry. I'm looking at page eight, um which has the summary. But maybe if you would. There, okay. Page eight. Um and basically, if you look at uh on the adjusted budget to adopted budget twenty one twenty two. And it looks like they're up one point three billion in certificate. And at one point one, they're classified. Um the employee benefits are down one minute, half one. So um first question we raised that would be how can the benefits drop when our salaries go up?
So the primary reason for that is that we had an unusual one time payments in last year, the Aprils and that's. It will not be getting to have it in next year. Sorry, no, no. I'm not blabbering. I'm saying it's a reason. I'm not a teacher, but it happened. Uh it's because last year we had an unusual one time payment that we haven't made that goes in the benefit section, but we're not projecting to have next year. That's the primary reason why next year's budget numbers for benefits is lower.
And the one time payment was for?
It was for our retirement uh true up, for our retirement that we need to stir.
We had a one time true up payment. And do those increases in certificate salaries or classified salaries need to reflect hiring at work?
So certificates and classified, you know, I didn't study those in really great detail today. I did a couple of weeks ago and I forgot all of the specifics to answer the question. Um off the cuff. I can bring more specifics on those next time around. It's great.
That's why I mean, I'm just trying to see how the parts are moving. And I also noticed that the sir was saving three point seven million in our assumptions if we hired nobody. As we talked, this seems like a strategy. Um but uh maybe when you give more information, you can kind of relate that. To the type of the portion of the item that's starting to be a gap or one, because that's what they're giving me apart.
Yeah, that's true.
So that'll be good. No problem. That is my question to that.
Do you have questions on that?
Any other questions on?
And do expect the adopted budget to continue to change? And specifically in the in the sorts of giving last five hours working hours, we tie down some of those figures. Continuing to modify that every year as we go far spending plan on hiring for next year, this year.
If we're through with this one, perhaps we can move on to the capital.
Just two more things. It's the five year.
Oh yeah.
And also for this, I get a question that the capital managers are missing the term on our. On this budget for this one. And that's picture. So with the tentative budget, we were um increasing our total from down to to one and a quarter. You know, if you want to be misjudged, that's not for this.
Yeah.
But now in this budget, it looks like we're dropping six hundred thousand. So there's a delta. Almost two million. And I'm wondering what what's going on in that change from raising our total on that to to reducing.
Are you and you're looking at the twenty one twenty two adopted budget one piece, right?
I'm looking at June thirty of twenty two in both cases, yes.
Okay, and comparing that to the to each other basically. From the last one round.
What what page are we on?
Thirty. It's thirty of the piece of paper. So the changes that I made from last time from the tentative budget version of this to this version. Were specifically around the state maintenance line. So that dollar amount increased to the six million. It used to be lower. And also I modified it to show that we're gonna spend all of the money because I have been hearing that the states are going to be very um. Specific in adhering to the deadline. So I previously in this method budget, I believe I had a number left over and I removed that. Knowing that they're asking us to spend all of the funds by the end of the year. So that's one adjustment.
So what I'm seeing is we're getting more like to where we posed with run up in the permanent. It's we're up by two, a little over two million there. But we're spending two million more.
Yes, and I also estimated in the equipment fund area that we would be spending a lot more for the IT needs. So between those two, that was a spending. Don't remember the number off the top of my head, but well over a million dollars compared to the last version.
Okay, well, you know, if I still.
Yeah, it was a modification of not only the revenues, but also our expenses projections of what we've been spending next year. So yes, there are multiple adjustments in that in that table.
Did you have comments on the five year?
Yes, we'll describe that one too. Okay. So the five year projections. Just keep in mind, the very first page you see on PDF is a summary. It's just a one pager of what you see on the next few pages. So that's useful to you. Great, but we'll dive into the details. So again, very limited changes from last time to this time. So you'll be able to follow along. The numbers that changed are in red font, try to make these honest. So the primary number that changes here is the cola or the TCR. And that does flow from one year into the next future years, right? So it's a cola for us for twenty one twenty two. But it also helps us out in future years to close into those years as well. Okay, so that's one of the primary changes. The IT refresh is one of the primary changes. You see that way down in the transfers out. The appropriations for contingencies is one of the changes. That's the four point one million dollars you see in the twenty one twenty two draft document budget line. And then you get into the the next line, still appropriations for contingencies. You see that I have a negative one point five million in there. So this is a little confusing. Bear with me. If you think about it, we know we have four point one set aside as this expense that we have allocated yet. So we have to carry that expense out into future years. I'm assuming we're gonna we're gonna spend all of it and not have any of it drop in the bottom. So in the future year, the next year, twenty two, twenty three, that one point five is my very rough estimate based on a rough estimate. Of how much we would be allocated in a specific category. And then the rest of it would be followed to be in the the ending of balance to help offset our exit. That makes sense? So that means we're only spending one point five of it in next year. And two point six of it is falling down and you see that in that drop in here. Okay? So if we were to allocate more of that, it would reduce or increase our expenses. And then bring our balance lower in those future out years.
So even retaining the rest of the four point one that we've spent really down. We'd be more twenty two, twenty three projected, so I'd be over two million dollar deficit.
No, no, our, we don't have that deficit in twenty three, twenty four, just to twenty two, twenty three. That's what I'm. Yes, yes, yes.
So you you you're keeping that.
We're keeping two point six of it and we still have a deficit in twenty two, twenty three. That's right.
Um the the point six is confusing because I thought I thought the four point one wasn't part of our balance yet. So how how would you?
So it's not this year, twenty one, twenty two.
Oh, I thought it was this year.
This year it's it's an expense. This year we're we're assuming we'll spend it all. Yeah.
Yeah. A zero. A zero.
And then next year. I'm assuming that of that expense, we ended up only spending next year, one and a half, when we were keeping the rest.
Although when you say next year, you mean twenty two.
Twenty two, twenty three. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, but so we're gonna continue to be conservative like year over year because that's what the one is.
Yes, we'll we'll keep getting it because it's cola. So it stays with us.
Yes, right. But you're splitting it off of this one set of.
Right. So you can see, as Marshall was pointing out, in twenty two, twenty three, we still have a large deficit, a two million dollar deficit. And then going out in future years, you have surplus. And that brings me full circle back another page, if you don't mind, to the budget stabilization action items. So the budget stabilization action items are items of doctors.
Three.
Page three of the. You see that column in the top and you see them all. You see they're in the expense line. They're negative numbers.
I just put the allocate. Plus they're bigger for the actions of that.
They they decrease our.
Theirs.
Yes, they're saying. Do you find it interesting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so the budget stabilization action items are action items that Dr. Swami has been discussing for well over a year now. And these are the specific descriptions or categories of action items he was discussing and dollar amounts he was projecting. We would do for savings in those two lap years. So in twenty two, twenty three, we total those, we're looking at one point three seven five million, so almost one point four million. And then in twenty three, twenty four, it's one point four million. So you can see that that basically is how we're bringing the budget into balance is by reducing our expenses by one point four in twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four. So if those were not in here. It can result in a very different. We would have a a start of deficit carry out. We would have a deficit every year coming out. Yes.
Well, two things. One is um I think that those particular action items need some further discussion. Um both in college, both immediately or not those problems. I would want none to ask you about. Um and the other thing is, I just wanted to assert that we have that a great deal of on the year money. Here's the skin. Um but this is on page two, the increase in out of state tuition and international tuition. The accumulation may be fair because I understand it as well. And so the accumulation here would be at least two two million in this year. So if we look at our bottom line, that chunk of money is big for the money, you know, to burn it out that way. Part it it took, you know, to do that on our bottom line. Um what I think is, and I said this before, it's not particularly physically stable to rely on. I think it's just good money that we like having, but it never draws anything to go away, to go fast for some reason. And um so I am concerned in terms of just the stability that we put so much emphasis on that as a way to balance the budget.
Can I describe that only one? That was one of my two last couple points. So she's spot on. When you look at page two, you have the increase in out of state tuition and the increase in international tuition. And you can see that we projected out these um increases each year with the same dollar amount. But then you increase it cumulates over previous year, right? So it's those amounts each year. And what those are based on is back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Those weren't our highest years in international out of state, but they were kind of stable years. Um so our my projections here are based on those years, so way, way back then. I don't wanna call it pre-COVID. It's not really pre-COVID. It's even back before we had higher levels. Okay, but not our highest size. So that's um in that time period, it was about two thousand two hundred FTS per non-lewis. Uh about eight hundred in out of state, one thousand two hundred in national, somewhere around that. Compared to right now, there's a thousand FTS in total between two. So to give you an idea, we've remained way down because of the pandemic. And this projection is projecting that all the way out by twenty four, twenty five, we would be back to those three, thirty level levels. Okay? Gets us to twenty four, twenty five, fifteen million dollars in revenue for international out of state. So it's a very large portion of our revenue, well over ten percent of our revenue would be attributed to international out of state. Those future years, or I should say it was back in the sixteen seventies, it's come down, it was ten percent for a while. Now it's much, much lower. Yes.
So then what you're saying, um I guess the just one concern is that even though you have these numbers, they are over conservative numbers.
Well, it's.
Based on the fact that you're you're referencing years back and years back as your objective goal. So that means that you have conservative numbers. And that we're not plus over the line on those. Okay? Does that make sense?
No, it does make sense. I think I I think I could admit, no, they're not the most conservative numbers. The most conservative numbers would have been like nineteen, twenty was lower than the numbers that we've used here. We're hoping that we can get back up amongst the highest years, which is some of our our higher years. So no, we're not the most conservative. It could be more conservative.
Yeah, I I think we have, we're all, so I'm certainly a little, I don't know what that, you know, the. But the example, um China was the third, wasn't the third question. And China and Oregon have to go along that well by now. And there's still accidents in California and stuff. So I don't know how far, how much this world has changed. I appreciate your mistake and your assessment. My concern is because of those things that is the next pandemic. Um it's not the best place to. it's not the best place to address your actual out-of-state budget. You should think about that.
Right, alternatively, it is a very good place for us to do marketing efforts to our best because it's a large portion of revenue that comes to us if we get back to.
It's enough, it's a clear opportunity. And it does, it does suggest, suggest, you know, being a hard market. I mean, ample marketing because the money was better than marketing is leverage.
I keep thinking, especially with tags, like we've been much, like an online, fully online AA, that how the tag can exist where you would, you do your teacher in your home country and finish your American degree.
And also, we hear, you know, if you were to.
These provide.
And also, and also that's an issue for these other four prophets in the room, luring our potential students away and allowing them to compete.
If you're told to say this, how much money?
I remember that, that Yosipin said that facilities, I think, is related to marketing students. Because the better facilities we have attract more talent. I think we should keep that in mind, but well, the sales.
The other piece on here is, is the years out projected, like we are projecting out to 21, 25. If that would happen faster, that would be fantastic for our budget. It's a big impact if they meant $4 million or $2 million a year earlier. Who knows, right? But that would be a big difference if we found that faster. Or slower would also be a problem.
I would, if they're 12.5, we have the end of this fiscal year. If that, if that's a fault, if no changes, really? I know we have a bunch of cheap, I think it's about a 10%, but.
Yes, in the budget, we do have some assumptions of changes as well. And keep in mind that 12.5 million on the projections includes a lot more than out-of-state and international.
Yes. What was the actual for this? Did you actually find that exactly?
You know what? I have a number that our budgets for 21, 22 for international out-of-state is about $7 million.
Is that revenue?
International and out-of-state combined.
Yeah, I mean, I like the summary, it's a little bit.
The last piece I wanted to point out is specific to one highly unusual thing that's normally in here. And that's assumptions around our FTS. So this has no assumptions built in about our FTS. No assumptions of them declining, increasing. This is just assuming that our FTS remains the same. Now recall that the same right now, we're not being funded on our FTS right now. We're at this COVID stability protection funding level for FTS. So this is great news for us. We're getting funded on prior stable FTS levels. That was extended for this fiscal year, 21, 22. We don't know if that will be extended to future fiscal years or not. We don't know what our FTS is going to look like in 22, 23, 24, 25. So we felt that the best thing we could do was still be no assumptions there. There's no increases or decreases, but that will likely change what these projections look like. Hopefully have a better idea of our FTS in the future and how they're funded. To be able to use the fact that it's funded, be funded based on our actual FTS or some other stability type scenario.
So I really appreciate you bringing that up because I had that question. Is the, is there an assumption here that in 22, 23, we are having the same number of students we have in 21, 22? Or, I mean, I know it's a three-year average.
Right.
So, and I think that I also know that the good news is they will let us keep the historic average. It will make us conform to our actual FTS.
Right, so, yes.
So a third year in 22, 23, even if it drops, which it probably would from that original couple of years ago, doesn't, because it's average, it's not close to that. But are you using that or are you just, or just holding this TCR block?
And just adding towards and then.
And so, yes, so literally not taking any of the FTS adjustments.
Correct. Absolutely, yeah.
That's a table. This is common. So at some point, we don't get the benefit of the COVID relief, but for the COVID exception, it's a lot of true benefit. But in terms of interstate local students, we're seeing demographic changes. We add globally, we hear about fewer students going to go to. Need to be part of here at some point, somebody who can talk to us about that. What is, what is, what is happening, what are the projections of graphic changes of COVID impacts?
Maybe when the sun is out.
That's what I felt a lot.
Yeah.
We didn't know who our people. When was that?
December, when Dr. White, wait, two months.
Probably a topic for next year, but next calendar.
Those are all the things I wanted to highlight.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just have one more question. I think it's, I think I know the answer, it's one of the ones we're more involved in. I will talk to you about. So there's, what's in here are some of the stabilization action items, which I'll draw up at this pace. Are there any things that are of like investment basis to then grow enrollment or market? I mean, other marketings in there, and that's increased, but is there any that invests? Maybe that's the 4.1 million, so maybe I'm maybe headed it, but yeah. What is in here? Is there any investments made to lead to those higher revenues in future?
That's a great question for your board of speakers. Absolutely, your fault. No, we don't have any other larger increases in marketing or anything like that. It's primarily this out-of-state, international tuition increases on the revenue side, like you pointed out. And do take a look at the very last page of the course, is the reserves. And if we go down this path and are able to have a balanced budget in those future years, you see that our reserves stay well above the board, policy doesn't need an amount. We're just using up some reserves in 22, 23 of these projections. And again, the budget stabilization action items, like I said, just call it 1.4 million each year. You know, it's a big impact on the reserves if we do more or less of them sooner or later, obviously. So let's say we didn't do any of them in 22, 23, and that deficit is going to be, you know, four, sorry, you know, $3.5 million deficit, it's kind of a $2 million deficit, which based on these projections, we'll be able to let her stay above the board policy. And then in the future year, how much would we produce instead or increase revenue instead?
And then just to clarify one more time, so the 4.1 is my, that's the appropriate, so you're.
It's the COLA.
Oh, that's the.
Just think of it as how we allocate the COLA.
Okay, so that's like our COLA spending. And the 5.466, and that I designated, technically that includes her, right? Like that's what we have, we just put me $1,000, that I designated surplus is her, essentially.
No.
No.
No. When we get to the HERF report, there's a lot of impact, it's really confusing. This really doesn't include any leftover money from HERF because we're saying we need to spend it all in HERF 2 and then HERF 3. We're saying we're getting the lost revenue recovery in and it decreases our deficit.
Okay, so HERF 3 is all the lost, like that?
It's almost all lost revenue, yes.
So then it downs despite you, prevents us from using that, that reserve.
Yes.
So that definitely is a wholly existent, that marks.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would want to do this with my is. Oh, that's right, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right.
Instead of using it, we use her.
Yes, I apologize. The more confusing thing when we get to the HERF item is obviously something totally opposite. If we don't spend all of the, the person with the white hat, the UGF COVID mitigation money, which is the HERF money that we moved into UGF, that would increase our reserve balance. If we don't spend it all, we'll go through that, but.
That's in UGF.
That's in UGF, and that's not in here yet. That's not in here because we're assuming we're spending it all on COVID related services.
Like 81 projects, right?
This one is 62 product.
Okay.
There's even more projects, number three, four of the projections in.
Okay, so the two is the one with 60 projects. And that's the one where you might not spend all of the.
Potential, yes. It is all your money.
But if we don't spend it and go into UGF or is it?
It is in UGF, yes.
Okay, so already in.
Yes, but not fills into any of this. This is assuming that we're always spent. For anybody listening to this, UGF is an understatement for fun. Thank you.
So when will we know like what ends last fiscal year? When is that itself? When will we know if these things expect or not?
Um, the process to close our fiscal year and our books is a little slow. So probably not until August, September, yeah.
That's assuming you have purely projected it.
That's not assuming, I'm certain that I did not.
Magic, good planning, magic sometimes happens. Is there a point here that we would say then that we have eliminated the structural deficit?
If we instituted reductions that total, permanent ongoing reductions that total 2.8 million, yes. If we don't institute changes, we've got one from four one year, one from four another year, which is not very age enough, then we would continue to have that structural deficit. Also ending negotiations with power and that COLA and other strategies we're going to use that COLA for. That's a big piece of this budget puzzle, how we utilize the COLA.
And you're going to have to weigh in on the direction.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I did well that, and I should have brought this up earlier. We're still only putting a half, 500,000 into construction fund for emergency projects. We used to put in 2 million, 300,000. So there's a million and a half there that to me has not been expressed in the construction. Trust me, I'm not saying 2 million is the right number. I'm just saying I think we will go on what we need to make in my facilities to manage.
That's a job of that one. I agree very much. I do want to point out one thing that I failed to describe to you. On the construction fund, we adjusted our PAM to follow the budget, the budget on the annual bracket. And we have put, have a AP from the non-resident tuition directly into the construction fund where it belongs, which gives us about right now, so it's a small number right now, about a half a million dollars straight into the construction fund, which is why I reduced the transfer to half a million, so there's still something about a million.
Okay.
So it's not at that, but it's a little more likely we'll be there directly now, so it's not insurance draw.
Yeah. My concept is that we shouldn't be just doing emergency stuff with that fund. It should be, we should, as I think I said, for projecting out, we know this, these buildings are leaving through in this pipe, like condos do. And you know, what's the reserve amount that we need to adjust, we need to make a statement. We're not even close to that.
We're getting, you had mentioned earlier, as part of the governor's budget?
Yes.
We're getting.
Five and a half million dollars, yes.
Is that possible or is that actually?
It's all the HERF maintenance money, so there's, it is restricted. It can only be spent on certain types of things. The restrictions are not too bad, we're dealing with plenty of HERF maintenance stuff also.
Sort of one kind?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the issue. We need to feast our families, sort of.
Yes. Also, we're pointing out, since it's supposed to be part of your mentioned it, we spend a considerable amount on emergency maintenance because of our new facilities. We add to our facilities, we're going to have maybe a $2 million emergency there here. I'm not kidding, I get a bump off every day, a pipe loop, you know?
Yeah, the infrastructure.
Every day, you know, something, there's a lot of damage that goes back.
So is this something that the board might consider as a part of their plan? Is this a way to think about how to track down the plan? Measures that we want to then have, if you're, if you're having or understanding?
Yeah. And that appeals to people too. Age facilities, it's a sad story.
This is what the board is telling me, I'm starting so much on.
And it's cheaper than having five years down the road.
And that's going to be your fault, you have that as an theory.
Where is it?
Our.
Monty, do we?
Yes.
Okay.
A more.
And we need to talk about the, on your budget.
So for this item, I just want to talk about a story here. Which, I'm very glad this was put on the agenda because I haven't had an opportunity to just talk and share this story about what fire cap out of the plan looks like. And keep in mind that the fire cap out of the plan is really our entire facility's needs plan. Just re-titled from the chancellor's office, fire cap out of the plan. We have to submit to them the fire cap out of the plan. And a couple of years ago, we agreed, we want to submit to the chancellor's office all of our upcoming needs, not just the ones that we're going to request funds for. So many years ago, we only requested two, three, maybe five projects in the fire cap out of the plan because we specifically requested projects that we knew were going to ask the state for funding for. But the more strategic way to do it is to provide a clean list of everything you have upcoming so that they know at the state level, what all the different health and community policies are in terms of facilities. So what we're looking at for the fire cap out of the plan is also something that I just keep in a basic spreadsheet that I said to give you because it has more notes and information of just our facilities needs. This plan, we've been working on ever since we finished the facilities master plan. That was a big pivotal moment for us. It was a bunch of input gathering to put together a facilities master plan because we really didn't have one previously, our current list, one of those one that we use. So after the facilities master plan, we got to focus on this list of all the different things we need and kind of timing of what they look like. So the PE building project, as you know, we have funding coming from the state, so that remains at the top of our list and is in progress. The next one, I have noted as a new student services building. So this one has a little bit of a story to it. All the different meetings and input gathering I've done over the last couple of years, a lot has been focused on student services. You know, almost all of our constituents agree, we really need to do student services building or modernization of it or something because it's not serving our student needs. Originally, we were talking about modernizing the current building because we could get state funding for that and then let's do that. That's kind of your go-to thing is just modernize what we have. Well, the more we talked about it, the more we thought, why do we want to modernize this building that doesn't fit everything we need in it? And we know that. You know, we're still going to have programs that are floating around campus that belong to student services. So we came up with an idea, let's just do a new student service building. It's the right size, right shape, it's exactly what we want. We wouldn't be tied to. We wouldn't be tied to, uh, restrictions around modernizing a building life for life, which we are for the people. But maybe that's fine, because the program isn't changing in that we decide to go. So with student services and this latest plan, so let's do a new student services building, so we can make the way we need it. And then, that would leave us with a really great asset with the current student services building, being able to be a permanent swing space building. It's a, it's kind of a perfect box, it's pretty easy to remodel every time we switch whatever program is in it, because we know that we have so many facilities on this campus that need modernizing, we almost all of them. And we're gonna be in this space, like we have been for many, many years, what we all got here, modernizing buildings. And what this district has relied on so far is portable buildings. You know, let's just throw in some portable buildings, and that'll be swing space, and we'll take them out later, then we don't have to take them out because we're modernizing something else, and then we use those portable buildings again, and it's this vicious cycle where we have this reliance on portable buildings forever, and not this long-term strategic thinking, and aware that we're going to need a permanent swing space location as we modernize all the buildings. So the concept with this is, we'll use the student services building as the swing space for everything, for physical science, for administration, for all the buildings we do. It's a large enough building that it should work give or take, it can't be like a tiny building, because it's not even big enough, right? And student services is jumped to number two on the list, because everything, everyone I talk to says that's one of our biggest needs, right? So that's the story of change, and in a lot of our plans, I've changed a lot of our plans to be able to think of this idea of using student services as the permanent swing space across all of the different projects. So you can see throughout this list, swing space coming up, and that's just really logical, that, okay, we're gonna do this building, so we have to remodel student services first. And it's just all staged out in that word. So physical science building really being the third modernization or the third large project afterward in student services, the physical science. Again, that came from all the different sessions I have, I run a facilities and safety committee meeting, um, also write a resource committee. We're hearing a lot about physical science, like, we need to get, that's, actually, you know what I pointed out earlier, you know, marketing about great labs, we don't have great labs, we don't have a great physical science building. And that really can draw students and, and support possibly for funding. So that one has, has come up the list from previous versions of this, for all those reasons. And next is the children's center renovation, that wasn't on the list at all until I received feedback from someone saying, hey, look at about that building, that's a problem. Um, this is just a, a budget relief of how much we think we can spend to, to renovate it, it's not a whole sock scale, um, you know, tiered down or anything like that, it's just kind of a smaller renovation to get it up to speed. And these are kind of our, our primary projects we wanted to get going quickly.
Since we were discussing lessons learned from COVID, um, is it possible to think about the children's center, you know, as being enlarged? Because one of the things that COVID has taught us, for women particularly, you know, childcare has been, you know, such an important element, and their inability to kind of keep up with equity. And so it might just be something that we consider in terms of expanding, is childcare to be. One of the things that COVID taught us, that people need to be able to have childbearing as the new economy and, and jobs, you know, around, you know, uh, um, these kinds of caregiving industries are changing, this might be something for us to consider.
Yeah, we just have to look at all the different variables with something like that, you know, how much do we wanna invest in that type of program, that we're having to subsidize? And we're gonna talk about this a lot more than any of you asked, we bring back a lot more information on the childcare center and the injuries. So I, I'm expecting we'll do a kind of deep dive on that, and maybe get into this, and maybe get that deep dive, such a lot to do there.
I have a question on the swing space, we listed the cost of, of updating student services building each time, we need to do the first one space. How do you want the analysis to put it, save us and cost to use it, that swing space instead of each time?
I don't know. I think that would be an interesting number to, to compare, um, and to see, because obviously we won't want to do that, it's actually obviously asked for us to do it. Um, and it's gonna be easier to explain to college and community, why we're looking for any kind of cost, that's the cost. Well, the nice thing, one of the cost pieces is at the end of the day, we still have an asset, and the portable's still, that's one piece. Another piece, finally, of the cost, is the environment, student learning environment in the real building versus portable is substantially higher, so that it can't really put a price tag on, but it does make an impact on students for those programs in a couple of years during the construction time period, but often making a lot of that too. I mean, I also think, you know, there are two things with portals. One is typically the community likes it when you're eliminating portals, and there appears to be, our enrollment is down, so what we can do to eliminate portals will speak to the community, but also there's the other piece of, of, um, renting them. And as a community resource, um, they also like that, so, um, I think there's some ways to tie those together, um, in terms of in common and, and community resources that are possible. Would people have my story or?
Just at the same point, this way it stays. Is, is that square footage count against our allocation? Is there a, a new world? You, you can't add new square footage on campus, um, without sharing something else out.
Yeah, yeah, and it depends on what kind of funding we're looking for, for the state to different projects. So some, sometimes that's very project specific and programmatic specific. Uh, we have to be, we're not in a growth mode, so to get funding from the state or something that shows that we're growing, we wouldn't be able to get it to non-growing. So, yes, it does impact that if we're trying to grow in different areas, but that's not on, we're looking for funding from the state, we're looking for funding from resources.
I think there's a postal provision, I suppose, that would pay.
Yes.
I think the postal provision, so.
Certainly, except for, um, the listener, you don't even need to go.
That we didn't go?
Well, one from it.
Oh, 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 yeah, the, um, uh, what was the theater, uh, film studies?
Such design, media, well, we did, they were about to tell us what it was.
Song of the?
Oh, yeah, Song of the, yeah.
School of Media Arts.
Sorry.
School of Media Arts.
Right, so we had nothing that was gonna be there, but that was the kind of wish we said, you know?
So it's just something we're, we're planning, because if, uh, if we discovered that that won't work, then the plan has to change.
Yes.
I, I had to say this, but, the, I think because of COVID, we talked about assessing these, are you gonna need a whole lot for this? I know you need to modernize what you have, but what are students gonna want in the future? What are the gap limits? If more people, if that's a result of COVID, more workers want, end up working from home, and students end up learning from home, we would need a quality building. I mean, new with, anyway, additional, as I should say. Maybe this is, I think, there, this is a more conversation, I, I can't really bring that, because I know you need to build it, but at the same time, you don't wanna have buildings anymore. Look what you've had for the last eighteen months, empty buildings, and education is gone. Still have people graduating, they have not a year.
Yeah. So you want to, want to make this morning?
Right, I think that a conversation needs to happen very soon. You need to find out what it is people prefer, because they vote with their feet.
It, it has huge implications.
It has huge implications.
Putting you apart.
Yeah, everybody, not just some, it's a bar, but everybody needs to look at that, most organizations are.
Combined with lower enrollment, I think those are two big elements in this whole process, you know, we can't be asking for building money, we don't need buildings.
Yeah, you gotta figure out what you need buildings, but which ones do you need? And what do you use our spaces for? Because the spaces may be quite different uses, for people, students who just can't use, and they're, you know, trying spaces, learning spaces, or something, they're not interacting.
Well, I'm sure this could be, it all worked out within six weeks.
Oh, no, no, sorry, because of that, no. But I, I'm just putting that out there for your consideration.
I think it's a huge, huge topic, you know? In the commercial, it's, it's huge change going on.
Yeah.
They don't know, they, they don't know, just like education doesn't know. So we need to get our hands on it.
Yeah, I mean, look at what's happening in hospitals, they didn't want us to come to the hospital, you know? There's so much you do, like, self-defense, stay at home, everything's changing.
Well, one, one logical, at least, one semi-logical sequence of thought there, was there would be less, fewer buildings of this sort for instructional stuff as well, but what you might need is, uh, student housing.
Yeah, you make the spaces for different things.
Yeah, I know, so assumptions, but, and it's a special, if we really wanna get a thousand business, but there is no question that that need is quite clear.
Yeah, I think they need to talk about it, but I don't know, you know, so my cousin said the state law about facilities, and they need to be guided, you should have to vote with them, so, you know?
Just somebody's stand.
Based on our feedback, based on our, your position.
Right, and, and they give the money, but they don't need to be joined under the same model that they can use it, I, I don't think, I mean, they just need to examine it, maybe it remains the same.
No, I don't think so. I don't think it's gonna remain the same, I think if we insist on it remaining the same, we're in for a huge surprise.
Well, there are just like so many of the buildings in the United States of America.
Yeah.
Can we talk about New York?
And if we start thinking about that in a creative way, then that's gonna be a very exciting.
Oh, yeah, it's true, yeah.
And, and we have to, the, the problem is, we need to be right in terms of conclusions we draw, and so we're gonna need some help in figuring that out, and that, because none of us are both experts in, and, uh, the idea of a future test is still a little difficult to, to identify and to ascertain. But it's something to do with.
We love. Hey, it's, I mean, I mean, um, yeah, no, it's fine, I mean, I just would like to add, you know, choose online instruction, but we do know that it's still a difficult modality for many of our students. Um, students have to be independent learners for the most part, you know, they may be getting better at it, but they're still, we still have a long way to go, there's still, you know, significant equity gaps with online learning, um, there's, there's a lot of students that don't have the ability to, to have a quiet place to study, to, um, a quiet place to take a test, to do their work online. I, I think there's a need to call this one of those things, that's particularly true for the community-based student. I'm not saying that I don't do better, I'm just reading through it, I think online will be, will increase, no question, but I think we have to look at that alongside of the traits and put it in front of the students, and, and our students need more. I mean, I spent my entire career in this system, I mean, I was a student in this system too, so, um, you know what I'm saying, I guess that's something you need to be mindful of that.
And the campus might be the place that some of that takes place.
It could very well.
Could be that quite, Alex.
Alex, you just, you have to consider all, all of it.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
There's nothing.
To gather, because I understand that there was significant drop in Black Men, you know, students going from in-person instruction on this campus online. I wanna say almost forty percent of the Black students don't continue. Um, so that needs to really be looked at, and this discussion takes place.
So you say that forty percent of students?
My understanding was that, um, when the campus went from in-person to online, forty percent of the Black students did not continue.
No, that's a trend, that's odd work.
Yeah.
Violence is probably a loss.
I don't know the number for the female students, but I also heard for this campus in these places that fit.
Yeah, I'm just relating to this, to both those comments, I think, let's, oh, yeah, related to both those comments, I think a couple things we need to bear in mind, um, the campus, your point of tools that we want and add a little more to this idea of how learning has changed and what kind of spaces we're gonna be using, um, we might think about this in two steps, in two, if that immediate feature, which is, is addressing, you know, some of this concern, because, uh, I, I think that some of these wills sort of play out differently over time, for a different minority of students. I think it's also important to understand that some of that discontinuation isn't just based on opportunity, yes, but parents don't wanna send their kids to places where they might get COVID. So some, you know, so what I'm saying is there's more going on than what people will assume, you know, based on some of these communities and what they can know about, but these are, these are studies that have been done that have been moving about how that's gonna be a factor, that minority, um, households don't want their kids to come back to a campus that, you know, they may get COVID or something, so there is that fear. So I just want us to be mindful that there are several elements put in that we can tap as we, like, think about this, right, this, you know, um, immediate feature and then a long-term plan.
We really love some students, some students.
Yeah.
Yeah, what students would like, we, we just don't include students in the conversation a lot. We make plans for them without their.
Without their own plot.
Yeah, there it was, why would you plan for people that?
They're the users, they're the customer, you need to, you need to.
Little socials.
We have, that's okay, I break them, please. Okay, so I'm gonna continue down a list, I'm on number seven of this guy, which is the campus center building. So a, a refresher, the campus center building, we had slated to, uh, modernize it, and we even had state funding for it, but the board decided to forego the funding because of the various budget issues we were having. So that particular building has been very high on our list of buildings that we need to do something with, look at different options, modernizing it, replacing it somewhere else, these different ideas. But this latest, this latest plan lands on modernizing that particular building, because it's in a great location, and it's like, where else do you put campus center? It's only the campus center area. Uh, the building does need quite a bit of renovating for various reasons, we need to get the right programs in there, uh, we have had a great success just recently, and it's almost brand new, and gonna be moving into the, um, Center for Social Justice, Acton is there now, and Logan's there, and Stan and Mayzar are there, they admit elsewhere on campus, so we've done a good job getting some of the right things there, but it still doesn't quite house some programs that should be there, and a lot of issues, that's still a building with water entrance, which is half underground, and a whole kitchen area that we just totally need to be redone and whatnot. So it's still very high on our list, we've sent a lot of emergency maintenance money on that particular building, but this one would have to all be funded with local dollars, so we're not gonna be able to request money for the state to still be in any form of action, because we decided to, um, forego that funding and that already been approved, so we're not gonna be able to ask for money for that again.
I don't know, it's, but, why does, I mean, that appears to be a penalty? Why would the state engage in a penalty for creative thinking and, and honest, honest evaluation of where we were? I mean, I remember that decision, and I feel it was not easily taken, but it, it seemed like a very clearly defined positive decision that should not have engendered.
Yes.
Life's not fair?
No, I, I, I didn't, I didn't have to shine some light on that. So the process to request on, on two state or project is a multi-year process.
Right.
When we request the initial project proposal from the state, we're all on the same page, then it's our initial project proposal, we're not committing. We're not committed to doing it, but we want to know if they will approve it initially, and then we should move forward on it. When we submit the final project proposal, that's our commitment to the state that we're actually going to do the project. And to please spend hours and months and years of time studying the project for us, lots of man-hours with their staff looking at it, and then allocating money to us instead of to another district. So not only does it irritate the chancellor office, it irritates all of our colleagues who wanted that fund. Because there's hundreds of colleges that request state funds every year for capital projects. So when you say you want the money, and it's slated in the governor's state budget, the town or our city policy is giving the money. And then after the end of the day, and the money's headed our way, and the state don't want it, it's.
Snap in the face of the.
And we've done it twice, and they know we've done it twice. I will tell you, when you go to their time, we might as well stop all the tasks, say, we won't. Not, I had a very hard time getting the project. I was with the chancellor facilities. I just started, and having to say, you're very sorry, we're working on this, this is going to happen again. Please, you know, speak. It was a big deal, very big deal. Basically, no other district has ever done that, and we've done it twice.
The problem, it wasn't that we didn't want it, but we didn't have the ability to make it.
Yeah, they probably say, well, why didn't you.
That works, yeah.
Well, pretty much everyone has someone in certain budgets except.
And now we're going to have to ask. Well, I do understand that project, and in the function of the process that they've adopted. So, and I'm not, I'm just saying, it's nutsy. But I mean, somehow there needs to be a contingency that allows a school to say, we just accounted for the initial sum. I agree that some from the state is delayed until we, we got work, and transfer it immediately to somebody else. I guess, well, I, I think I do understand that, that why they would be reluctant, I do understand that.
We don't like it, but, you know, I mean, they're saying, we'll give you the bulk of it, and we want to make up the difference. This is our way to do it, and you should find a way to do it. They don't, they don't turn around, that's all, that's what they're accustomed to, that's what they're.
One big thing that the chancellor's office has, isn't that, I mean, community colleges in California are locally, and we give money depending on F T P S, but this is one area that Sacramento has the ability to, the chancellor's office has the ability to have some control. If I was arguing for a different process, I would say, take the part of money that's available for building, and allocate it some way on an annual basis to everybody there. It's not something.
Well, it is well above the chancellor's office. This is a part of the state budget, it's in the governor's budget, all these specific projects. So it's highly involved in the actual legislative process. The chancellor's office advocates for us and puts together a format to review.
This whole complicated formula for deciding who gets the money, yes.
But what you have to do, you have to look at it as a game.
That's the problem.
And you have to, and you have to, you have to, you're going to play. They are not going to change the rules.
I know.
We have had this conversation before.
Two strikes, two strikes.
Well, we have, we're not going to change them. We just have to figure out a way to make it work for us.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
And, but you did successfully. It's not, it's not, it's not a derailment, it's a, it's a track that they do in opera.
Well.
Yeah, and it's related.
We're into that theoretical.
Yeah, we're just going, I'll operate, and we don't have that much.
Well, I would just conclude by saying, we don't know what we can afford to keep them. Unless we have a problem, that's what we meant. So we're making another shot at that.
But the money is still there, right?
We don't, we just.
We don't have that money.
All the P E money's gone?
No, no, it's still there.
Oh, we have funding from the state that we keep.
Oh, it's here.
It is in process, yes. We don't have enough for our share.
Right, I remember the problem. I thought it was, it was this bad.
Okay. I would be standing here because I'd have to notify your faculty and friends.
You're taking up a collection of the.
Yeah. But I won't share with you, Peter. I am on statewide committee for facilities support, and I sit at the table, and I have to pay the price. And I said, this formula includes twenty-five percent local match. My district can't do it, other districts can't do it. And I waved, and jumped up and down, and said, James, it's back to zero percent or a small percent. I mean, the other thirty people on the committee said, no. But I tried. Tried for us. So they, they really want districts to have the.
They know we should have a stadium. It's like a student's education. We provide this, but then they got to do something. And that's how there's, okay, we must have, you got to do something.
And maybe they said they want schools to get local bonds, that's what they want. They want theirs to be a piece, and that districts should get local bonds. Anyway, so we got.
Yeah, the lowering of threshold for passing, all of that was in Congress.
Okay, this is a bit similar. I think I kind of described all of the ones that James, more or less, or the last plan besides the order. Still have the Adam building here as a modernization. Number eleven is a new instructional building we have been talking about for a couple of years, specifically just to replace our portable buildings, not really grow, to your point. Just to replace those portable buildings that we're, we're kind of stuck with what we have right now. We have removed a lot of them, thanks to the West Campus building. But we're still stuck with a handful more, and, you know, they're just aging. They're not good learning environments, and also sensitive to maintain. So that's the new instructional building we support. Then we get into Wake and Shaw, of course, also need new buildings to replace their portables and modernizations of their existing facilities. And you may recall, a while ago, when we were working on the A F P key of the facilities master plan, we went out and did community sessions for the community. And at Wake, they absolutely was not about modernizing the look and feel of those old buildings that elementary schools, they love that, they're attached to it. Their kids went to school there, and grandkids, you know, go there, all this stuff. And so they want it to look like that, they're finding that it needs to be improved, modernized, you know, better electricity, better fixtures, et cetera. But they want that whole building at, at the Wake Center. And of course, a lot of the historic buildings, that's really as well, but they do need modernization. The timing, as you look at this, the timing of these different buildings does change when you start to talk about the waiting shot. Because we are trying to get as much done in this plan as early as possible to reduce the cost to the district, right, with taxpayers. So we want to do the projects as soon as we can to decrease the escalation that's going to happen through starting. So we do have that factored in here, that we could start some of the other campuses earlier. But on this main campus, we pretty much just have one renovation at a time. Because more than that impacts your students too much. It's hard for us to manage that many projects at once. So that's what it looks like on the main campus. I got through it all. There is one piece in here, note that on the new student services building, this plan, we have been talking about starting design for that now. Note it says the life was twenty twenty-one. And that is in anticipation of potentially having bond. And, I mean, what we would ask for, we want to be saying, let's get started on it to reduce our escalation possible, if the design is done, pass upon, break down immediately. So we have factored that in, that's what it wants to do with the new student services building. It would need to spend a million, two million dollars on the design, or we have gone to find out what that type of a plan. There you go. That's why I got. March his hands up.
Peter, excuse me? No, no, I'm looking at eighteen, which is infrastructure and safety. And it has a forty million dollar first tag. Would that have broken up any more?
Yeah, and we have to see, you know, what the funding looks like, and what people are interested in, what people might vote for. That one might be something interesting if we, you know, something that taxpayers are interested in, or it might not be.
Sure.
Taxpayers usually like that, because they can identify with it, because their plumbing goes bad, and their electrical wires and all that, they can really relate to that.
Sure.
It's not very sexy, though.
It's not, it's not sexy, but it's weird.
Like a contingency, huh?
No, that one's not a contingency. And actually, there was a contingency inherent of forty million dollars on top of all this. So I took that out because it was just a contingency about an exact item. This is a specific project for infrastructure and safety, like all of the walkways that are no longer eighty-eight compliant because they're crooked, but car seats. But plumbing, like the plumbing that runs across the whole district, not just in one building, those types of things.
So if we were, you know, if we were to do a bond measure, and you have all of these items in the bond, which are going to itemize, well.
Yeah, we'd detail that out.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, and some of those have you behind as I.
Peter, I, yeah, I didn't see it. Just quickly, um, infrastructure and safety. I was wondering about, I was wondering about electronic vehicles and recharge stations. Is that something that's within our, in our plans at all?
We have, yeah, we have four here, and four on East Campus. We have expanded them over the years. And we'll probably continue to do so. We just moved to the ones that cost money because of COVID. They haven't been free before, COVID community never did again free, that's the issue. So we just switched them over to the ones that can cost money. That'll help support the program, support the student. A bunch of us are E car, so we're searching for support for that.
There's.
Okay. So are we ready for our next time?
At Washington. Not nearly.
Not nearly, that's right.
Yeah. Um, here's, here's, here's what I think we need to ask for, to draft and look more seriously. And that is, that this document as a five-year plan is going to be here as a part of a bond. Are you going to be looking at? The numbers are huge. Our last successful bond was seventy-seven, seventy-seven million dollars. And this is five hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. And one of the things that has happened, we were talking about state funding earlier, only fourteen and a half percent of it is state funded, and eighty-five and a half percent is local. That's not what we look at previously in terms of settling the bond, explaining the bond to our community, saying, you know, we put up money, we allow them to stay. Can't say that yet. So I think that's, I think we need to grapple with as far, far as more about money that we ask for the bond.
This is all of the needs, right? And you're going to prioritize this typically, you wouldn't put all of this.
But there's still going to look at it as a plan, and they're going to say, well, they're asking for, you know, a hundred and fifty million now, and look what they expect to do in the next five years. They're going to be back for more, for all this other money. So I think we have to think about it in those terms.
Could I, if I can, related to that, is how much of this would be the bond? In other words, I don't know if I understand all the politics. You have potential state contribution, which would not be part of the, of the escalation costs. What would be the bond amount if you were to do all this?
Right. So, all of that, we have a lot of work to do before we get there. This is for us to understand what a strategy could be if we had an unlimited amount of money. This is not really driving exactly what our bond may or may not be. That's why we need to start working with the bond campaign consultants. And they'll do polling, they'll find out what's exciting, taxpayers. Maybe we think the physical science is really important, and the taxpayers are not interested, so we don't even ask for it.
What we ask for, including, you have a question.
Yes.
If we determine by polling.
Polling, yes.
Not our own estimates saying.
Right.
Well, we might determine from science.
What you're doing is doing an argument. This is our wish list.
All right, well, we figure out the argument to you, yes. I mean, we may find out in polling that asking for three hundred and fifty million dollars.
They're going to determine how much the public will pay. And then you go to your list, and you figure out what the public would support. And that will not, and then what they would support, pay for, they're part of.
I understand that, but I am saying these people have been working this whole list. This is, this whole list would be what we submit to the chancellor's office. It's our five-year construction plan. If we're telling people, the chancellor's office, this is the next five years, it doesn't matter what we're asking for.
I think it does matter. I mean, look at all the bonds that passed, and people don't typically go look up your five-year construction plan unless you, who they got there for them to see. I mean, it's a public document. What they'll see when you go out in your campaign, these are the things that you want to fund. I've never seen it where, I participated, I was chancellor, and there were three successful bonds, and we never had that kind of problem.
Well, it was totally involved in twenty fourteen, and we have a sophisticated community. And I'm just saying, I think it's a problem that we have such a small amount of state contribution working in Haperton, and that we have to change both in the number represented to be the next five years.
And so with the community, the argument you need to present to the community is that this college serves our community, and we need your help. The state is not going to give us the money for this. There is not, and that got to convince them, because this is the community's college.
I don't think, I can't just stop there. But I would say from my experience with bonds, is that it is very much, I mean, create your bond, as we were talking about, based on community feedback and polling. And if there, there is a disconnect always, it can load the community up. Hundreds and hundreds of millions more than will ever ask for a bond. And, and so with the community's power, you essentially prioritize your list. And if the community is deriving that list, and they, they can, they can understand that, and I agree, they are sophisticated to be too understanding if you have many millions of dollars that you're not asking for. And that's, that's just the way it is.
If I can finish, where have this going? We have on here a number of projects that are in fact beyond the five years. What I was saying was, we have a number of projects listed here in our construction plan that we need to project plans before. It'll be under five years, and now can this start, or in the five years? So my, I love the question is, why, why add to the amount of money? You're asking for five years, given five years. And that takes out two hundred and thirteen million dollars, which is more than.
This is not a five.
This is a, this is a plan that goes beyond five.
No.
Yeah, and the years, the years are listed to show that a bunch of these partners are welcome in five years. They do have dates.
So what you're saying is don't submit this list, submit a shorter list?
Yeah.
I'm saying that this is the list that is in fact within five years.
And why are you, why are you talking about?
Because it's a five-year campus plan, that's the red one, for Kansas.
Oh, I see.
Figure the five years, and tell them, tell them, I'll roll out.
It's not clear, but what we ask for, the chancellor's office, is not the same thing. We're saying to them, maybe we have to do it all these.
Which you said the community for, look this up.
Yeah. I am.
Yeah, and that's entirely possible, I think. Not entirely possible.
What's the last one you said? Who's the last one you.
We lost twenty-four to five, that was the worst. We barely lost, and we were, a low turnout. Five was just turned out, how many people would it be? We got eighty percent.
And we are.
It's in five. We're just here now, don't we?
Oh, it's.
Well, I didn't see on the outside, it's very, it's very true.
Is there any contact with the.
And that's what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Chancellor's office asks. So what Marcia suggested is that you can start the submission at which one?
Let's see.
I don't know.
Right.
Probably.
Just write in values.
Yeah, probably write after children's summer elevation.
But the bond list is still a. But the bond list is going to go way below that. I mean, the bond list is much longer than that.
Well, we don't know what the bond list is, do we?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. The list that you went over, the needs list, the needs list is much, much longer.
I don't see how we can pay anything. Uh, this is till we, till we do our research.
I, I just. Wait, wait, the intent didn't have it all there so that you can see that we have more needs than the shorter list. But I, I agree with your point too, but it's like which ones are important, that you can see, we have a lot of needs? Or that they don't see things that are not inside the bond exactly? I'm not, I'm not sure.
So I'm not giving that one in.
So you need to make a decision today from, well, Thursday, because this is going to be the year that she has descended to, I was at DC Sacramento.
How about we just do two of those, so just do the two of those.
No, we can, we can.
Not one, to the chancellor.
This is a hundred, this is an excerpt of a hundred page document for this particular piece. We submitted something just like this similar to this last year, we talked polling for this last year. This is just a lobby.
What's the impact on the state chancellor's office if you cut it out, that short?
If I cut it short, the state is unaware of our other piece and it reduces our.
They're not going to lobby, they're not going to pay for most of them and they're not asking for the ones that's on here.
Well, I, I do see a lot of, um, data from the state of them providing all of our revenues from all of us. And that's how they lobby for more money for us, going out in the years. That's what they use it for.
So there's nothing wrong with submitting projects within five years, even those called five years.
Right, I'm sorry.
Have to, do we have, I haven't broken it down, but do we have five, beyond five-year projects where we're asking for no statement?
Uh, we have projects that are beyond five years that we would ask for.
For no statement?
We have, we have both. We have ones that, we couldn't ask and ones that we would, how do we get some both?
So we get worth dropping out the ones that we wouldn't match for statement, because they're not going to give us.
Those are the ones you can ask the community to put money for. So we want to see those.
That's when we start talking to those communities with bond, project priorities list is totally good. Because we don't go yet know what it is. I mean, I know what projects appear to be, but I don't know what things.
Right, so, but I have to use this one, including the first five years and ten years. Goes to state as per custom practice tradition. In addition to that, we create a separate list that will identify our all these, we're not comparing through that state.
But you gotta approve this five-year construction, this five-year plan to on the twenty-second.
Right.
This is a two-year, two-year. And you're required that, as we submitted a shorter list of this project for which we expected to ask statement. We focused on the state and the project, so there's no tradition.
So I guess the, the model would be you're going to say, what's the value of doing this, right?
Yeah, for me, the value of me having to do this complete list is I present the same information as before as I do to various, various governments, for instance. Internal, not my facts, but initially the Lord, the head markets, to virtually all of the same groups. One is only not there for us.
The other piece, it, what's the impact at the state chancellor's office? Well, there's a video list like this, and then this time, if you submit one of it, put short, they, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know. Because we have flip-flop. We went from a really, really short list one year to a very long list this time it was last year. And then we have the same thing again, so we've been having two years of consistency if we stuck with this? Yes.
Will I make a decision today or any, soon on the twenty-second?
No, I would need to know today if you guys want me to change this. I won't be able to change it on the twenty-second because we need to approve it on the twenty-second. Whatever, but like, we should do it. Not to that, yeah. You just have to tell me what you want to see on this.
I wanted to say like that, how does this go? No, I don't see any downside. Whereas if we could sustain it, apparently it'd be easy to include. That's not good.
Um, I just heard that I heard. The other thing I think we have to come.
The situation was yes.
Yes, so I'm going to bring it back. You're going to see it next time and you do have to overlook the last three, because we have a more time coming up.
It's two forty-six now.
Can I raise a couple more things that I can do? One is, it's come up, regarding planning home, we have the normal limit, at least thirty percent less we didn't claim. So we need to have a parent understanding, we touched on this earlier, we're not from home. The impact of online classes, the changing uses of facilities, and that would confer, well, parent understanding this if we want to have a little bond. We can't just say, well, your business is, we have to talk about this, we have to understand. I don't know why we are not saying, and, you know, this is because we have a, we have thirty percent fewer students and maybe we have portfolios of greater range. We don't need another new building. Or if we need another new building, it's a really different building because of the chain function and the definition, this is happening to. I don't think this much is, that's already, but in fact, we have to, we have to understand it. Those are.
I think those are all the counts that you consider.
And I think we need to do it.
Yeah, it needs to go again, because that still happened very soon. With the facility, with the facility and the shopping, somebody knows, stuff, yeah, does the surveying. There's a lot of work that needs to go into the planning of it, so you consider all the right things. And facilities is one aspect.
Right, right, so I'm, I'm just, not discussing today, but I think it's a really important big golden step. And it's a college step.
Okay, how would you, and that's what I'm hearing, what, what you see manifest?
I've seen manifestable in municipal governments and you, and they're worth it.
And perhaps special consultants as well.
Yeah, so let us, we can talk about that in company level policy.
Good. Okay.
Okay.
Your turn.
Do you, oh, do you guys need to break or do we?
No, they're good.
Okay, they're good. Sorry.
We just started, we just started.
I don't feel like we got started, but.
Woo, after lunch, after lunch. Now, can you guys say your break?
I have your way. I have one more thing.
Oh, she has another question. We still have one more to.
Okay, one more thing. When you're thinking about infrastructure, I think that we need to think about our site. We did not understand that our building was built on performance land. This site is a more permanent build for airport. Dumped a bunch of stuff when they had it fell down with the airport and probably before that. So understanding the nature of our site and where we are putting things, we need to be part of infrastructure and need to be working on that. We have to do the building, so we need to know our course of thought.
So there's a reminder.
I was like, side came over, discussions right, the building, they're coming down toward.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should have a site that can valuation.
Yeah, that was easy.
There you go. For example, that's different from the other, right?
Go on to her. This, uh.
All right.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah. Any other trustees with questions on anything about the bond? So the takeaway is, um, Lindsay is to put the list on the Thursday agenda as it is. Our leadership team's going to come up with a recommendation of how to have this discussion of kind of deconstructing COVID and all of its, and its impact on how we do our work? And how we use our facilities? I think those were the two things, we want to make sure.
Okay.
And one?
Yes, and rather decline. And impact on the facilities as well. All right, be ready with Lindsay.
Okay, Herb. Woo, are you guys ready?
And we have a few extra minutes, nine extra minutes.
No, we have, we have two forty-five.
I was at two forty-five. Okay, let's go. Just going to be here three forty-five.
Okay. Now.
But could, could we say that if anybody needs to take a break, make a take?
Just a. Okay, so bear with me here on her. Because I swear, it is so complicated, you know, I just go, women. It's, it's tough. But here we go. Hopefully you had time to read the, the written write-up. They tried to, you know, explain everything there and then also this eight-page report. So let's, let's just walk through, kind of try and explain these reports.
So what page are we on?
So I'm going to be on this data report one.
It's a number two.
Okay.
Page one of that.
Okay. So.
I'm just going to say what you can read with your eye out there. Okay, so this is herb one, so remember we have three herds, the higher education emergency relief fund. We received over the last year and a half. So herb one, it's a history here, was, was a small dollar round. Two, two point eight million for the institutional side, two point eight million on the student side. And then this MSI, smaller portion, didn't fill there, primarily these seven thousand. So this was very, very early on in pandemic, we got this over a year, year ago. Um, at this point, you know, we had no idea we had more, two, three money coming. We weren't seeing two point eight million dollars, it was Googles and dollars, but it was definitely something we were in need to help with, right? So the reason why I tell you that story is because we didn't do any type of proposal process to set, to get information from our employees, what they didn't want to do with this money. We, we knew we would need to use this money as an institution for E, for H R, for whatever we, we thought we needed to use on, okay? So what I have listed here is how much of that money we spent. And just some of the orders to spend this category, okay? So hopefully this category is lucky, if not, let me know, we'll have you adjust. But we have built in here what trustee manager requested, which is loss revenues from that specific time period back through the beginning of the pandemic. So around that estimate, we'll have to finalize. And we, I did call out, have air purifiers in all of these funds. We've spent a substantial portion of money on those, so I want to call out how much we've spent so far there. And you can see, it's showing about two point five million in expenses right now in herb one. Three hundred thousand left. This money has to be spent by June thirty, the other day, ten days ago, oh, days ago, fourteen days ago, geez. But we're still closing our books, we saw the voices rolling in, just not exactly certain how many voices are going to roll in. And if every penny will be spent or not. If not every penny is expended from here, no problem. We have plenty of expenses related to COVID that we could spend from the uncharted general fund, COVID fund, will bring, will go over here. That will be some more money left there, okay?
Okay. Thank you for putting in the loss revenue, where is it in our budget this year? Or claiming you have a perfect one or two?
Herb one in last fiscal year, so you didn't see it in any of the budget stuff because it's in the last fiscal. So it'll, it'll add to how well we did in twenty twenty-one.
I think that will improve our budget for the last one.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. And moving right along, herb one students, we spent all that money real quick, so can we look at herb one on the student side? So that's, that's herb one. Herb two, page two, same kind of layout here. So starting with institutional side. We received eight point nine million institutional funds. And we allocated almost all of it to loss revenue recovery. Okay, a portion that's specific to unrestricted general fund and a portion of those restricted funds. So I want to make sure, everybody understand that she means by loss revenue recovery. Yeah, primarily international, which in the United States are just losses. It's three-year average from the past, of our averages, and that, that's how we were.
So you have to make a call.
Yeah.
But we will give you, you're ready?
Yeah, so that number gets bigger. Yes, that's right, that's right. So, and then student side. For the student side, it was much smaller for herb two, it was the same amount as herb one, so we confused, really it's the same amount. We have two point eight million for herb two, for the student side. But we added another three and a thousand for non-credit students, because we did that herb one and we wanted to be the same number two.
That's more understanding than you.
No, we took it from herb two. You can take from the institutional side, we gave more students, so perfectly, that's what they want you to do. So no problem there. So you can see it, it actually pointed over from the institutional side.
The student side over there.
Yeah. Okay, and here's where it gets a little more complicated, this third column, I have titled U G F COVID mitigation. Okay, so when we took the loss revenue money from herb two institutional and put it over into the U G F. You can see that over here on the right, the different categories, about six and a half million. Once the books close, we can calculate that that number is exact, this is not the exact number. So I apologize, it's in a column called actuals, but those are estimates, those will change. So it could be plus or minus a different number, so all of these numbers are, will definitely change. So roughly six and a half million coming into the uncharted general fund. When it comes into the uncharted general fund, first and, first and foremost, it'll offset our deficit. But there's way more than we need, that's what the deficit, the deficit we've estimated around one and a half million for twenty twenty-one. So there's much more than one and a half million, right, from six million. So then you see that, then we allocated money out. And that's on the next page, if you want to know exactly what we allocated money out to. That was when we did a herb proposal process, where we sent out a survey of all of our employees and said, if you have a proposal, money you need specifically COVID. Please tell us what money you need and we'll bring it and look at it. So we did that and we funded, it's actually sixty-one projects, there's a couple of them that are not in here, but you see sixty-three on here. So you can see the actual projects that were approved for funding. And they're approved for funding from this U G F COVID mitigation fund, not directly from herb. And you can see we've only spent about half a million of the, say, five million so far. So there is quite a bit of money still sitting there, it was approved for spending.
Is that money in U G F or?
Yes, I mean, it is in the U G F COVID mitigation fund, but whether it is, yes.
So just to reemphasize, there's no spending date for that money as long as it's in U G F. The reason, to put it in U G F in the first place, that doesn't mean we don't spend it, it just means you don't have somebody saying.
Oh, you didn't spend the date of that. It also means we don't have to spend a lot of COVID-related things.
Right.
If you want to, or we don't have to go through the hot.
What is that, Hamburg, it's like, I think I lost you a moment ago, what is the number of you're talking about?
So we're talking about in this U G F COVID mitigation, we moved about six and a half million from loss revenues. We've spent about a half million and there's still four and a half million not quite spent.
We have. Million.
Got it.
The list of those things, that five million is on the next page, so we actually see what they are.
Were people given a deadline?
Oh, we did give folks a deadline, we did. We told them to try and shoot for around October of this year coming up. And a lot of folks have not, they either are starting right now because they need to get things rolling. Or there's been changes, I mean, some departments have come back to me and said, you know what, I don't need that anymore. When the state has changed, I don't need it. So I wanted to hear kind of discussion from the board today and see if there's any new direction. Before we did a deep dive with all these requesters to see if they still are interested in using it or not, or if there's any new direction with it.
My understanding is that at one point in C P C, there was a strong request to have C P C have that same discussion with you. My understanding is that at one point in CPC, there was a strong request to have CPC have that same discussion with you talking about with us. That they wanted to have the discussion about what other uses are allowed. This project thing is so misleading, don't you think? I mean, it's, it's a lot like program review. People have particular projects, so we talk about what you have to focus on. So figure strategic for this question hasn't been taken from CPC forever.
It's two part answer. Part along with that request. CPC also requested that the projects that were initially presented or vetting for her two would have another chance to move back. And we did that. So for her three. We did another call for proposals. We got a bunch of new proposals. But we also took all the proposals from her two that were not approved. And vetted all of those together through one process through the budget resource allocation committee. And they did a thorough review of all of the projects that we've been receiving, that we received proposals for in one big bunch. So that was a huge part of that discussion. Doesn't answer your question, you know. The other piece of it is the piece you brought up. And in the CPC meetings, the focus leaned toward what I just described and away from your focus. So there wasn't a thorough conversation about what you're asking about. Because the focus redirected on draft and what's the vetting process gonna look like? And how were they getting it re-approved and looked at again. So that was the topic, but the conversation was nil, it was what you just said.
Yeah, I mean, some sources wanted a special group, a sub-group to, to look at this and break down recommendations and all that.
And say this could be used as a rationale. But I want to ask Jonathan, is this clear to you now?
This is super clear. Yeah, this, this is actually all exactly what we need.
Okay.
So it's, the only last question. That four point five is pretty much the rest of these projects on here, right? And then the one point four, not even, just four point five.
Right, you got it exactly right.
Okay, so you're trying to ask us, do we want that four point five to go to the rest of these projects? Or maybe some else? That's really, that's what we're seeing this way.
And I have one more related question, when we get to her three. Exactly.
So the question you're posing right now is, is there any direction the board wants to give regarding the four point five million dollars?
But I want to describe her three.
Before, okay, it's now.
Sorry, Jane.
This is very interesting, from before, on how you look.
I could say you were swimming in money.
Yeah, you did. And you did come to me outside of the Peter Hoxton today, so.
So for her three, now on page eight. For her three, that's the one we're going to achieve even more money. Ten point three million of institutional money and ten point, basically the same, ten point seven for students, okay? So the students are now getting poodles with money. No, you know, so there is really a reason to move any more money from institutional side or the student side. But we're estimating the same rough amount, and this is really rough, right? So please don't hold me to these numbers for lost revenues. Because I'm trying to estimate what our lost revenues are gonna be this year. I'm not sure. I hope they're not us back. I hope they're less than eight point six million, right? Because that's based on last year, I hope our numbers are a little. But assuming that it's the same number, for lack of me having crystal ball, knowing better number. That that only leaves about one point eight billion from her three for other things. Now, because we already did a call for proposals for her three funds. And we received hundreds of proposals for her three, even more than her two. We have this budget resource allocation committee. Did vet all of the her two and her three and three projects together. And they recommended for approval, four million dollar projects, which is clearly a lot more than one point seven. So we just finished all that vetting process and are bringing it to the board today. To see if there's any direction on whether we should fund a smaller amount. In the event that, we're concerned that maybe we need to do some other things with that money around vaccine. Incentive to make students to get vaccinated, around COVID testing. Because we're in this pandemic landscape with constantly changing needs. It is a little hard to know, what exactly should we earmark this money for? Should we be spending it all on these vetted proposals? Maybe not higher recommendations on, because we know we're gonna have some other things coming pending negotiations that our teams can work on today. That are in the potentially over a million dollar range. So we have two pieces, trustee, if we have the one point seven million from her three. That I could use some direction on quickly, because I have to get back to these people who are costing money. But then we also have her two. If we want to continue forward or have to do some more research on if those folks really still need those funds or not.
I think the high, very, very high priority. Is money to be spent. On COVID-related. Number one, testing. So that we have the ability to test on a regular basis. When we passed our policy on May twenty-seventh. We people prefer periodic testing. We find that. In my mind, that means for those who are not vaccinated. I don't know what it is, at least once a week. In my mind. And I don't know what it costs today, but I, I think we've got to look at that and compare to spend the money. Two. I think we need to look at significantly reduced stimulus. To students, faculty, staff who are vaccinated, maybe. You know, maybe I could separate those out from the students. I can't. I know that, that, this is, this is an example, I'm a Harvard board executive at Delta College. Which passed a vaccine mandate in June, but rescinded in July because very extreme. Pullback on. They, they came up with a. System where every student who's vaccinated, whether they're just recently vaccinated or before vaccinated. They're all entitled to free, free online access, free online access to books. And I don't know what that means, I don't know.
They gave it something.
They gave it something. So I'm sure we got free to think of other things, maybe just cash payments. I get a little concerned about what we do. It signifies people now, it doesn't somehow apply to those who are already vaccinated. But this is a piece of adoption. It, it makes such a huge difference. In terms of protecting this power, protecting the citizens, you know, COVID virus.
Yeah, I keep looking towards our acting superintendent, president, oh, she'll develop. Oh, I'll speak for her. I'm gonna assume she would say this. So we worked very hard on this topic just yesterday. And one of the ideas is exactly what we're talking about, incentive, getting vaccinated. And what we talked about is cash incentive. We worked with Jeffrey, over at that, to give his ideas of what gets people excited.
Right.
You know, out there, we do something and it's, it's cash.
You know.
For cash. So we did talk about that. And it is almost two million dollars if we want to do something like that for students. So that's why this is such an important topic today, if we want to do something like that. But it's not like we have multiple these dollars on there.
I think it's hard for us to look at all of these projects, but we can't make it. We can't sit here and say, we need to do that. But I do get concerned that, that we're, you know, we spent all this money. On a hundred different projects. We could have spent on something that had a greater impact on those individual projects. Some of those. And that's how I view the vaccination. Money spent to get people vaccinated, tested. Is that kind of doing that in my regard? When we were at that meeting, just there.
And so, yes, yes, yeah, that's what we were thinking, is that this will have a really big impact during now. The board's, you know, desire to get students vaccinated, community vaccinated.
Is not objected that punch, if this continues to be pursued?
This was president's cabinet.
Yeah, but need to know that.
No, this cabinet is trying to say, no, we're not.
But it's not a lot.
It's serious.
Yeah, yeah, but still, you know, you want to do a lot, it's gonna be, we could get grocery cash. Like, I mean, we didn't see a bump from that. The numbers in the state were, they did this shoot statewide after, there was no actual bump. So there's no bump in, you know, so much money. Yeah, I guess it just doesn't really.
Well, we didn't feel that the cash would be like grocery cash, because we discussed that. People want to buy whatever they want, that's a purpose.
And the, the bump would occur, I think, not just because of national. But, but also because of the PR campaign meeting that we developed. Targeting those students. So that's another area of expenditure to, to. The advertising and marketing.
Do you get students and, and potentially vaccines? I mean, not the vaccine itself, but legitimately, the vaccination supply here.
If you think what we're doing, what, what we want to have done. Signs, the, I don't know, the commercial, it just don't count as a purpose.
I just think it's not fair, because we're giving money to the people who waited for the vaccine to get vaccinated. And this is taxpayer money, so why are the people who get vaccinated benefit?
Well, that's why, that's why I think it's first, we're concerned by something that just goes, goes, goes back, and then out.
Yeah, no, I share that. Yeah, I just think vaccine mandates, we waited for this.
Okay.
We were.
By the way.
I'll just adapt the LA Times analysis was that we, that the water company actually did. I just, I feel like in both cases, like I know we're talking about testing or we're talking about things like incentives that, that. We're not the first college to do these, so I would just, I would urge us to not bring them to Lille. And to look at, if we can, with the weather committee, colleges are doing, uh, the program. Because I, you know, I think we all have opinions, but other departments of, you know, it's kind of administrative degree. They, they make this work and it's a work to go to all of my. Discussion, although opposite direction to this one.
So the staff can come up with a plan, but you need to hear that we're gonna write the direction, right?
I say aside from the mandate, because by far, the age of my body, the fact that we're against vaccine. France is letting sign up for the mandate, those that. But. Setting that aside, why not assess this as all of our students, whether they're online or whether they're on campus. That we need not then to get that management marketing thing, accessibility thing. And. I would support that. We want that for our student center. I would suggest we broaden the concept. I think that was the intent, because it's something that's definitely back on the emphasis spread, they may all be, all like, be able to whatever. Yeah. It's good for office. And then the second point is, we're kind of lost over the testing part. And to the extent we have them vaccinated. I, you know, we're frequent testing, managing. That's our, this is how to say, this is not. Although I would say that, I mean, I think that that can end up being a huge incentive, because people don't want to get tested. And so I think that that's a place very good to look at. And just practically speaking, you know, my sense of politics is. So again, I wanted to look at what other colleges looked at. And I'd see if there's a real incentive to do it.
It's really, it's not necessarily in the head. You need practicals for that, if you don't do it.
Yeah.
Or it's not even part of it.
Another, another area. For what we expect is on vaccination.
Yeah, well, that would be part of this.
And I was hoping we were gonna. We not like to have vaccination.
For a minute.
For it. Okay, I don't know if we can do that, if that's possible.
How, can we not have attendance been at the, when you do it, so.
I have that. Uh, first one was, twenty-two people got vaccinated on seven, seven.
Twenty-two, four.
Forty, excuse me. People got vaccinated on seven, seven, I think it was twenty-three. We haven't been able to even over the numbers. We had twenty-three Johnson, Johnson shots and then nineteen advisor per shot. No, fifteen private first of four private second.
As students started uploading their vaccination records, yeah. So we don't even know what's happening.
Then we go in there one thing?
We go in there one thing, but we have five scheduled to.
The, the rest are all going to end around July. Yeah.
Have we asked them to upload their? Have we asked them to upload?
That's students, that's students.
Okay.
Well, the faculty staff, we have over three hundred uploaded.
I have a couple of points. Well, first is a question, can we do it to them when you upload it? Which is that, give your price or money, is that the part you upload it and you get paid?
Well.
Yeah.
Some of this is changing what my answer to that would be, but our original idea is to have a vaccination plan on campus. They walk up, they get their shot, they hit their catch, like instant gratification. But in regards to some of the comments here, what we do about folks who were good people and already got vaccinated? We need to chew on that a little bit, see what happens, what we do there.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jonathan's point is really well taken, but it's just, it's just about uploading. And it might need to be therefore a lesser amount of people, yeah, because we have a lot that is so big. But I think that's fair and that symbolizes the students to go ahead with either information than anything. We, they may have asked for shots, but you know, taking the time to upload is just one step that they will come out to. So I think that's a really good.
And then that's how you attract, if you don't upload it, and that's a carrot, I would say, you gotta pass it now, that you uploaded the. I have a couple of questions or points. So the question with her three is, why isn't there a UGF mitigation account for that six point five million there? Is that just all just being used on normal operations?
Yes, thank you, I'll point that out, yeah, that is.
That's a big.
Yeah, yeah.
So the six point five million lost revenue to UGF in her three is all going to ongoing operations. Whereas I guess that her two only one point five million is ongoing. So I guess that's the difference. I guess, I list here is, I guess if we have to talk about four point five, and I know we know all these projects, but the data. I didn't see that much about DEI in here. And that's again, I suppose, the TBT, parts of commitments, and we only put seventy-five thousand in the budget. I think a lot of us have said that was too low, so. That would be like an investment. Another one is investing in program development and doing that market research even at a higher level of what do people need? There's just so much I've just heard about, that I don't know, we need to really have good data and, and wrestling with that. And then other actual incentives to return. The vaccine is one thing, but then people might not come back because they have a different financial situation of, we need childcare, any of these. So I also can give it like an expanded promise, honestly. Use that money, that four point five, we promised only like one to two million a year. So we can do like a higher level, okay, we will pay for childcare if you come back, or we will, we will just do different things.
For certain period?
Yeah, not certain period, yeah, for this one year, or if you're twenty-five and you don't offer the promise, you never did. Your graduate high school, or you created, you never went to City College, or you did and dropped out. Come back to us, to things like that. Are you talking about just promised students or? No, like, like it's aimed at promised to more than just high school graduates. Because what you were saying, Robert, our demographics are changing, there's less high school graduates, but there's more mid-life, early twenties or late twenties. People who never went to college or dropped out. And they're just, you know, server and the rest, and I know those people.
I think that's a terrific idea. As part of that, so you're talking about those who know these laws.
Yeah, one of their southerners, they have a picture, yeah, they never did.
What was the figure we heard today about the number who lost, who know these laws?
Forty percent. Forty percent.
Forty percent?
I mean, so what do you think we can do to, 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 to?
Help them.
Right. So that's why I was like, we promise to go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not an expert on this, I apologize, there's some people out there. The ten point eight million we have of her three on the student side, I'm wondering if they need that. I, I don't have any restrictions around that, but if they need that to be used, some of the media rock itself, it has its, that's what it's for. Maybe, can I ask? Yeah, you can.
Yeah, we made permission free to come back. I don't know, I mean, I just think that there's so many people of my age who just never went to college.
There's a reason why the averages between a student and a college is around thirty, because they don't figure it out until they get their track.
And they don't call like the promise, right?
So we're like, high school students, to the specific.
Yes, he is talking about, uh, altering money, like, requirements for participation in the promise program.
But then you're, you're talking about your donors, and they may, may not, may or may not be able to support how much of expanding here.
Jeff seems to feel like that might be an acceptable alternative. And these might be here to play.
Because he's, at his time, at the report, but, and now I can talk just in their.
Yeah, it could be us fronting the money of higher level to make sure, whereas is there that market, the twenty eight year old who wants the promise? And then if it's working, then we go into the ones and say, oh, more people will be helped, not just basic graduates. It is that thing, like, if you're poor, you don't go to college, that's the thing.
Yeah, and I would also circle back to the one I raised before, making strategies to encourage our employee, or to, um, basically nutrition strategies, um, voluntarily get trained for a new job, whether it be by some, some other, um, institution, so that we have a smaller number of employees that corresponds to a smaller number of students. And do that without layoffs, which is the next key, give people incentives, and I know Helen has experienced that some of the colleges have done programs that are not certain programs, they're broader, that are not certain programs. That encourage people to, um, look at all. And they already be interested in those that they can, for their case here to begin.
I want to go down to that, because PP Shannon and I are completely hip on this one. So we actually are lucky right now in, in, in kind of reinventing how we hustle things like that as we speak. So when we get a bit of conditions, the ones left, whatever these names left. Uh, Shannon and I are working on reassigning folks from other positions, that are maybe, you know, not as full and not as needed. And then needing a job frame, they needed to go into a different job within the district. So instead of hiring more people from outside, trying to reassign people within the district into a role that might suit our program better. So I think that's.
I think that's actually probably part of that strategy, because then you're, you're keeping, you're keeping people. Um, I'm just saying, yeah, add any idea that they can train to be somebody else, on a new career, whatever. And that we could spend money to support that, um, because it's interesting. So, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm just suggest, say, put a chunk, that's may have a vote of what that is, to that kind of.
It's awesome, but we have a supervision.
Yeah, yeah, can I, can I restate what I think I heard, so I know I, I got the directions correct from everyone? So what I agree on is, there is high priority for us to spend some of this hurt money, or let's even call it COVID, maybe a COVID mitigation money needed, on things like incentives for vaccines, uh, vaccination clinics, COVID testing, um, potential, uh, things that we're in the middle of, we're shooting right now, on, um, incentives for employees, all those things of that nature, right, that, that work, they're spending, um, quite a chunk of money in those areas.
Parting, yes, order to the university, yes. And, and redesigning, uh, for expanding plans to include this other, they've done, yes.
I like that Jeff has already started going, it's not just two, two books, it's all within.
There is.
Hi, there is.
Thank you, not close. And don't keep bringing this back every month, I mean, if you're a lot of work, you might as well keep updating for you and later, continue to see it, so.
My concern was that, which is all just here, we have a chance to use a lot of the. Wait, just take a religion from this, so I'd like us to.
Do you have everything we need there? I've done, any more finance questions? Oh, wow, that's amazing, alright, so, we, we are going to take a little break, how about that?
That's a wonderful idea.
Okay, it's just on his way.
And we have, uh, scheduled to have Jeff coming by two forty five.
Three forty five.
It's twenty seven now.
And you might start, uh, all, if we're all inclined, there's a one thousand dollar cash award.
Yes! They came, we're ready to start. Trusty Millard.
Twenty five hundred dollars. Before we go. We always start. Dean, you wanna have a quick word about the little green sticker that, that fits to my ID card?
Sure.
And, uh, well, let's see if there are any questions about how to do it.
Uh, so these are the stickers we have for your ID cards. Uh, I will give them to you if you have uploaded yours and it's been approved. Uh, we're still giving Google some word out, but it is for, for pending right now. If you've done it, I'll give you yours and give you this here. Um, and you put this on top of where your, your trustee's approved on top, always flying. Yeah, and this is important. People ask sometimes, what do we do with these stickers, that the students just purposefully? And the best thing about it is, a student doesn't have to care around their vaccination. If they want to be verified that they're vaccinated, they just show that to, let the faculty members, if you want to go to the faculty office. Faculty may say, hey, you know something, if you're vaccinated, you can afford a mask. They just show the student ID, and now they don't have to be caring around that part, which is kind of important right now, for a lot of reasons. And also, we're hoping to use that information, because since you're, you're a piece of some dinner, uh, we can then pull reports off it. And what we can do is, we can actually send an email to faculty, letting them know the consent to students that are fully vaccinated in the class. And if that number hit a hundred percent, they can say, they're in the class, hey, you guys are up for a mask. Which would be really great. So it kind of, here's the board's direction was encourage people to get vaccinated, and this helps them, helps get the vaccine. And then also figure out system now, how to heat track all of these first, uh, dashes, kind of figure out how to track them, so we're gonna have.
So we haven't uploaded our, our, let's say I do that in the today, and how do we help that?
Well, uh, just tell us and we'll get it.
We're, we're.
We'll be back to the suite, right?
Yeah.
All right, you can do the working, just bring a sticker.
Oh, man.
You want it, or you just let me know when you're here?
Okay, um, a while ago, I said, uh, whoever would lie with my request for ten thousand dollars is cash money. And I saw somebody who was taking notes on that claim. But here, to speak of us, is, uh, the insect director of, of our foundation, and he was providing the thousand dollars, and I therefore gave him the flowers.
So, I'm finding out there's a bunch of trustees that do not have ID cards. If you let me know, so we can tell if I can be told if he wants, we need to do that.
Well, I think I want to know.
A bunch of you.
That is.
So who doesn't?
Marsha.
So Marsha can have a hand, then Marsha can have a hand.
Right.
I have a couple of.
Are you gonna do one?
I think I'm gonna rock that, uh.
Catwalk twenty one.
Oh, wow. This is what it's not. Okay, so three, we'll get that. Super, Jeff.
All right, well, thank you for the invitation. Uh, we did actually see somebody for the first time, I almost knew you, so. Uh, so today, I was, I was asked to come, to help me do a conversation about the gift that we all know we're very excited about. Uh, the, so I thought I'd maybe just set the table a little bit of context, and then we can have a conversation as, as we did. Um, so what you, like, they all know is that in EVO, this year, we were contacted by Scott's team of researchers and advisors, to let us know that SDCC Foundation had been chosen for to receive, uh, one of the many gifts, two hundred and sixty, uh, specific, uh, totally almost two point billion dollars. And she was getting, uh, a sort of third tranche of her mega line, and I will say, I was so delighted with what she's doing, she's teaching billionaires how you can be financially. Um, she's actually well here today, and when she started, it's literally not eighteen months ago, and she's given away almost a billion dollars. So that's, that's how well worth it in the current investment market. Uh, but what she did this time around, uh, was choose institutions that she felt had an impact in various things that she didn't sit in. Uh, and the way these gifts are given, uh, and I think this is really clear for us all to understand, nobody raised this money. I did not raise this money, but Paul did not raise this money, you did not, we didn't do that in a traditional sense. But a generation of work by faculty, staff, students, institution, of the power of rich. Uh, so she's looking at the long, what she did is, is sort of save her metrics around social and economic mobility, especially for the most marginalized students, members of our communities. Uh, and so the way these gifts were out is, you did contact information, you worked logistics. Uh, we did that in May, um, set up a transfer so the foundation accepted the gift in May of this year, and we had, uh, a basic non-disclosure agreement, if you will, uh, over the four months. And if you watch what she's done, which would be last three periods, that's how we found the gift. She's done the research, contacted the partners, distributed the assets, and then on public with a statement about why and how, what, what her hope is with this, this plan. Uh, so we had that a month, where we were sitting quietly, and we did a decent pieces of the, the puzzle. Uh, and then on June fifteenth, she published her piece in the, and that was the most recent. Uh, and so, uh, in a quick, uh, back and forth, uh, you know, conversation I had with, uh, trustee Haslam, as well as trustee Miller, who's on our board, as well as Dr. Legend, welcome back. Uh, we talked about what would we take to sort of give the backstory, this is not a lot of backstory, so that's both the beauty and the challenge of this kind of gift. So what you see on the screen there is her post in the. Um, and with any gift like this, and of course, this is true of everything, you know, for this gift, the, the assets of the SDCC Foundation were approximately seventy million dollars. They're now in excess of ninety million dollars, which is all for this gift. Um, and it's true of all of those gifts, over the forty five year history of our foundation, our relationship with the district, um, that there's a combination of legal, uh, and ethical constraints, so there's sort of certain boundaries within which you operate. And then there's a whole other question rank strategy. And so this gift is sort of the maximum of ladder and the minimum of form. Uh, this is a completely unstructured gift, so this gift was given because of that generation of work. Uh, and we'll talk about sort of what she says about why, and then it's an entirely open question as to how we use those dollars. So from a legal perspective, we could literally choose to send these dollars in almost any legal way, and that would be fine with the donor in this case. Um, the, the two things you need to know is that, you know, the, the other document, which is in your packet, maybe we'll come back to this one, if that's alright. Uh, the other document in your packet is actually the letter of the award letter. So, um, the way she's chosen to do her giving is to a donor advised fund, or actually a series of funds, the delegate chairment. Um, so it's a, it's a corporate for-profit, who has created a nonprofit home for donor advised funds, and you can probably read a little bit about how that's evolved in the last little while. But this is the actual award letter, so this is the only legal contract we have, uh, between the foundation and the delegate chair. Once a donor gives assets to donor advised, legally speaking, it's not their asset. They, they leave their gift, they got their maximum tax out of the, the dollars totally. When they do it well, which she does, is deploy quickly, and that means a few dollars. So the only thing in here, most of those bullet points are really about the, the, uh, the non-disclosure. And then the way that works, it's four months, and then, uh, it's her prerogative when it comes to public, once she does that, we can say anything you want, however. Um, right, so once she did that on June fifteenth, it's now very public, we can talk about who donated, why they did it, and she, of course, references it. Uh, so that's really all in the past now, so there's no restriction about what we say about it. Um, the rest of it there, uh, is really just the logistics piece, and essentially, all they ask for, and this is another thing, plan three, is up to one senior communication. In this case, on the foundation to say, here's what we're doing, here's how it's going. Uh, it is the, the dream, the opposite of the normal, unfortunately, plan three, which is highly detailed reports, which are questionable utility and take a lot of time. Uh, and so in this case, really just a communication, about how you're doing, what's happening, anything you want to share, uh, through, through the delegate with that. Uh, the, there is no timeline on the distribution of funds, so that's important to know, that no, no requirement will be used then by accident. So these could be here for under gifts, they could be non-existent. And whether anything is leaked, which is more likely, that probably either those just, uh, would be, would be fine. So what I would say, maybe we could go back now to the, um, kind of the meeting post, the, the thing, so that's really the only restriction. And, and essentially, we could be satisfied, with the exception of ongoing, but once a year communication act via the delegate to the donor. So this becomes sort of a guiding document of, of the donor's values, and these are not restrictions, so we could read that to say, that's real interesting, and then do something to put it under label. So theoretically, that would be fine. But what I would share with you is, I don't know, I believe strongly in best practices and highest ethics and plan three are to be aware of the intent of why it is made. Uh, and so in this case, what I did in the package is highlight the one line specific about higher ed. Uh, now, just in the site, we made over seven California community colleges that received a gift in this, this, this first one, she got that. Uh, Long Beach and Pasadena, which we see thirty million, um, College of the Desert, uh, was in there, Porterville was in there, uh, West Hills, Moore was in there. Uh, so it was, you know, it was a small selection of, of colleges. But she said here, higher education is through the pathway to opportunity, so we look for two and four year institutions successfully, educating students who come from communities that have been, uh, chronically underserved, that was a terminology. And so what that says is that, in their homework, they looked at things like Aspen Awards, they looked at vice versa rewards, they looked at funding from other institutions, and we will never know what they're doing with Saigon, but, but we can, I know, I know something of this group, and this, they were able to know that, that they were looking for those clues, and they found. And there's some commonalities in these seven institutions, which was quite. Um, and so, so when I think about how we use these dollars, I, I will also suggest to you, and I'll be quiet, because I like to hear your thoughts and questions, and we can have a conversation about, about what's next, is how do you honor that ethic? Obviously, we're gonna mean, we're gonna steward these dollars with a little problem, not really do with any gift, no matter what size it is, but in this case, um, there's more opportunity because of science. Uh, and, and I think there's three areas that from my perspective, we can think about and should consider about how you use dollars like this. So first, speaking to her comment, is what works that we know works, that obviously we've gotten some things that this institution have worked, and I would be right. So one of the things that we know is that some of those most innovative things that our faculty, staff do and lead are funded with private play, and many of them always happen. Um, and sort of venture capital of the institution's work, because public dollars don't always allow that. So that's why private is, you know, the plan three, that's it, on the rise in community college over the last couple of generations. So, that's why private is, you know, the plant fee that's been on the rise in community college over the last couple of generations. So, we can look at the SDCC funds, we can look at all the summer bridge programs under EOPS, because if any of those things are really made that true for our institution, above and beyond four solid rate classroom forms. Uh, we look at our accounting systems, we look at all of those. So, one thing I really think that I recommend you that we look at is what are things that work too well that we could stabilize this unfortunate discount? Um, endowment is something that is a mixed bag, and of course, we talk about it a lot, and there's, there's certain contexts which endowment things move out. What an endowment does is it takes out of the political policy and budget that they, that have to happen in any public institution. So, if you guys think that works and you want to stabilize it and not have to worry about what is the dollar flow that year, who is the leadership that year, what is the policy that year? You say, this is work and this is poor, and endowment can be a great tool. Uh, we fundraise for a lot of things. Uh, most of our EOP programs are entirely private funded, which the foundation have had since inception. The only piece that's due to public purse was the staff leader. Uh, and so those are the kinds of things, but for relatively small endowments, you could permanently save. So, um, if you want to look transition, if you want to look smart, if you wanted to look, I think, obviously promised, if you wanted to look, um, mapped, uh, any of the programs are, that are well known with that. Uh, the other thing you can do is take, take things that are important, but for various reasons, fall out of the priorities of the institution in the science. Think about things like the Atkins Center, where all the best have struggled about how you staff and stabilize that. You could do something with that, with, with the pick-up. So, think about those places in the university, things that already work in the college, in the district, um, and we can dedicate some dollars to do. That's one way you can choose. Um, the second is really that innovation money. And some of you were here when the Aspen Award was given, and we still hold 95% of those dollars. You know, initially, the idea was to use those as incentive dollars for innovation, for faculty and staff to do things that otherwise would be impossible. And that happens a lot, you know, we, we know how to do something, we know it'll work, we have models, we can build the best version of it. Um, but the amount of the money isn't there. So, a gift like this in the, well, that's the difference between the money that you can have and not. But the Aspen gift is still, that was only drawn on twice, and that was largely just because of the discontinuity of administration. So, we still have some who's now in practice a couple of years, and then they've gone, and then we started over with a different philosophy. And so those dollars have really never been used for their minds. Those are also unrestricted dollars. Uh, so there's that, that of still held by the, the map, which is about $500,000.
What kind of one was it?
Oh, which, definitely.
What you said.
Oh, innovation, okay, incentivizing innovation, to use some Latin jargon. Um, but, uh, but it's really, you know, what would make the difference? And I know that Dr. Swan and I had this conversation a few times in the spring, which is that he had, was hoping that some of these dollars would be used for that purpose, especially as we approach, um, you know, what he was talking about it in, in the context of a, an educational master. So, yeah, that's one frame you can look at, what would you want to incentivize and offer on the table for, if you come up with the best possible idea? It doesn't have to be a competitive crank cycle necessarily, although that works too. Um, the third area is really that discretionary, I think, I just want to remind us all that you were given the greatest gift in this gift, in that it was completely underserved. Um, and I would argue, we, it's incumbent upon me and my colleagues, the foundation, and your colleagues in the district, to pay that forward and make sure that the future, you know, long after we're not in our seats, that that resources is there for the person who needs those dollars to do something, and I've always noticed, and there's no other, there's no other way. Um, and I'm thinking that, you know, some of that can be plant, but that could be capital, that could be the difference between an okay building and a platinum league certified building. You know, it could be the difference between the sufficient, you know, capital budget and truly outstanding one. So, sometimes that gap will remain. Uh, maybe with $20 million, you can conceive of things like actual $1.7 million short where you get it. So, instead of saying, check and you go raise it, which is a financial as well, this is oftentimes a can, but that those dollars are actually saving. So, that's another possibility. Um, so I, I'll stop there. I mean, I think those are sort of the three broad buckets of ways that, that I think a gift of this size could be used well. Um, so some of it can be now, some of it can be in the next five years, and some of it, frankly, could be here for many, many, many years, and that would be a good thing for a long time. Um, I don't think it's good to sit down and park money indefinitely, much, you got a good reason to do. I mean, that's the whole thing with plant fee right now, is billions of dollars being parked and not deployed, and the tax credit is being given to the donor, and yet the dollars don't ever reach the sector. That's a problem with donor fundraising. So, we try to make sure those things are moved, and most of our private dollars operate that way. Um, but those are the kinds of things we do, do things about. Um, a gift of this size, there's two ways to think about it, you know, if we can kind of come up with a vision that we agree on, uh, we can write that into a simple policy, and, and that lives on, you know, the foundation through our management, and, you know, that's all that lives on in the board or the presidential president's office. Uh, you can create an MOU for something like this, and there's probably other sizes and scale where people were more comfortable with a, a finding region, certainly do that. Um, we don't have that with any other gift. What we have is just a general MOU, and of course, how we manage dollars. And, and so our dollars, just as a reminder, as large as they are, and on relative scale with community colleges, those are some of the biggest, one of the biggest foundations there is. Uh, but it's really not that large. You compare it next to Yale or Stanford's $40 billion. Um, and so, you know, there's, there's 210, I believe, restricted funds among that full asset base that we hold. So, most of those dollars are not dollars that you can just use as needed at the moment. And so those unrestricted dollars are typically down in the last. I would, uh, I'll stop there then.
Marsha.
Some questions. Um, can you give us a rough guess about what the, set aside some money so that it generated interest or impact, um, for the indebted future for some of us? How much $1,000,000 would that generate?
Yeah, I can actually, I can precisely, so, so the foundation's current spending policy, so every foundation that has an asset has a spending policy. Um, and for us, it's 4.5% of a 13-quarter rolling out, which is pretty much the median, and if you work the survey of the entire country, that's, that's roughly where we land in a minute.
Exactly.
So, 4.5%, and now that was changed during my tenure. So, when I came six years ago, we were 5% 13-quarter, I mean, say, well, it's really three years of market value averaged, and then divided by, well, it was 20, so times 4.5%. Um, but we, with markets that post great recession, investment markets really changed, and they didn't come back to the old way. So, if you look at all major endowments, they start to notch down the payout. Uh, it's not uncommon to have 3.5%, 2.4%, but you see, um, times you see something south of 4%. Uh, but we still, because we don't maximize the payout on all our downs every year, because they're really, um, passively managed insofar as the colleague doesn't request those dollars, doesn't need it that year, they can stay with us. So, we very rarely max, max payout every day that we hold. So, for us, there's a lot of room there, so we didn't do, we had to break that payout all the way down, so we left at 4.5%. So, a million dollars would give you $45,000 a year.
Marsha. Well, it is that we might want to get some portion in the down.
Right.
I, um, yeah.
I want to make sure I can.
I'm sorry. And then my second question before I forget, uh, as we're moving to the discussion. You said some very important things at the very beginning about where this came from, and how, and why, and then we have to think of our communications of, of faculty and staff, and, and, and previous people. I would think it would be great being a people to be a piece on that for our little, um, people. And, and also for our college, in the sense that they need to understand too, because when they make these choices, I think pretty much everybody's that have ideas for how to expand it, and this also, it says thank you, and to, to the right people, and also cranks. Why we might be doing a lot of people.
But why would that affect the whole, how would that be, you know, paying in?
It could be, I just think.
I thought that Jim sent it to me while.
No, it was. You just don't need to.
You scale the foundation.
I mean, you guys need, so.
I, I've actually wrapped something already for that purpose, so.
See, you're, you're hoping it, and you're working with this on, and, you know, we encourage more plant fee.
Um, well, first of all, I'd just like to say, um, that, um, in reading through, uh, and clicking on all the links in, um, in Ms. Scott's, uh, discussion, I was really proud of the fact that she emphasized the, um, a humanities interest, which we talked about, and the differences in poetry and what that meant, and she was deciding about how to use this money. So, one of the things that I'd like to think about is if there's a way, even though it's, you know, we don't have any limits on how, how we do it, I would really like to see that, um, uh, aspect of her, uh, giving recognized somehow through a support for the arts of humanities, because I really think oftentimes when we think about cash and future for these kinds of things, it's about STEM. And STEM's great, but I think STEM is good too, we need to have arts of humanities in there. And I think that would be, would honor her as we sort of think about that, but also really kind of again, give a boost to the humanities in there. It's, it tends to be the sort of health and disciplines people view as, as opposed to, you know, a way to really shore up and make commitment to.
There, you know, we sat here for two hours, and among all of us, we've come up with a lot of great ideas. But I, for me, the first thing is, what is the process we can go through to make these decisions? It's not just us, the campus, the community, I don't, do you have any thoughts on how we should go about that?
I do, I do. Um, I, I more have cautions as, as well as thoughts. And there is a strong impulse on gift like this comes to wanting to do stuff together with it. And I wouldn't caution against that instinct, because if you read the why, and you think about our needs, um, there, there are certain things that we haven't done yet for lack of cash, but they're not that many. And it's really about the things we've done all these years that we know work. So, getting back to that first bucket, what works that we can stabilize and makes even more solid and permanent? Um, I think that's, that would, in my opinion, be our best first decision. This first scan was already there, what could, by marginal increase or something radically different, be really, uh, bolstered and stabilized? And I think one thing, there has to be a conversation with everyone. And if you think about it, we're getting thousands of gifts every year that we're monitoring. Now, oftentimes, a donor is just acquiring, and then there is no discussion. Um, but I, I would just caution against a race, feel like we got to do something with it, other than first think about what's, what do we know, what, what do we do well that we constantly struggle with with money? Then I would say to that second part, that may be more to your point, trustee Miller, that maybe there is an active conversation we had about what's, what are the things we haven't touched or haven't dared to go because of lack of resources, because of, you know, we just don't want to disappoint and criticize the dollars to incentivize that. Um, to, just, trustee, you pointed to the point, remember, this, none of these dollars are permanently structured, so they can be endowed or not. And I will tell you, we've already moved them to our investment pools, and we split them 50/50 on the, on the, by advising leadership of my investment committee. That's, that's the way to do it. We don't want to keep them in cash, you know, that would be a binding thing of ours. Um, so what we did is we moved it to $10 million currently on a short term and $10 million on a long term. And one of the common ways that you try to avoid market timing is to move it in sections, from one into the whole, to the long term. So, you don't put all the money there in high market markets, which we all think, we're after, of course, we've all thought that for a year, um, that was 30% ago. But, um, but that way, we can just make a most, so it sits there, it tells you, um, you can draw it back out of the cash at any time, and you could start to just spend it, or you could permanently buy policy to enter it down. So, just know that either of those are completely unusable. It is a common term, quasi-endowment, which we're actually, we're close around it, because I don't think it's a great term. Uh, but basically, these dollars, you're treating a long-term investment, but you don't have any restriction on the expenditure market. So, that 4.5% wouldn't fly, just sort of add to you. When we have probably a half dozen of those kinds of things. Um, the, the phenomenon that came in December, that we announced, the nearly 400 house dollars from using a whole apartment, that was a quasi-endowment. It was something that was to be spent as needed. We invested it so that it had potential for earning. And of course, that's the difference between what we can do with the foundation, and first of all, the district, and do, um, is invest. That's one of the things that's, that's valuable about having a apartment. Um, but I, but I think that may be the place to have those conversations about what's, what's the most, and there are other things we know we would love to try, we just don't dare for limited funds available to the, you know, general funds and other finances.
I had a thought, as you were speaking about the Aspen Institute, and their focus on innovation, incentivizing innovation. Earlier today, we were talking about what have we learned and what can we learn from this pandemic experience? About any number of aspects, student learning, uh, working in place, working at home, uh, all these different variables that have, have really been revolutionized, the, the, the turn upside down. Um, what lessons do we take away from that? What can we apply? What, what do these apply? What, what does education, real education imply in a post-pandemic age? And I, I understand fully, that's just terribly big. And yet, I think if we irritate a lot, it becomes less big. And there may be a way by which to fund the development of a process that gets us closer to an understanding of what we might, what the takeaways are from this horrific experience.
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole, this is a really neat moment, and I don't need to overuse to be sure, but, but in, in any other normal time, the, the receipt of the $20 million certificate gift would be so, such an outlier that, you know, you have a lot, the entire wallack to talk about. We're also in a moment where I don't even spend a pound a day, where after three tranches of public relief funds, there is more money right now in certain institutions that have been years, and not to mention the California State Department. So, you actually have dual opportunities in the sense that there are things that you can do with some of those relief funds, that otherwise, the only source would have been something like this gift. And so, the other current, like I say, is think about how creatively you can use those relief funds for some of that work about pandemic recovery, lessons learned, and what would we do differently? Um, and then, you know, as a backstop to that, when you, when you get to the end of that moment, you do have these other bullet profit funds. Uh, but you, in a sense, you've got two really almost unheard of massive cash resources now coming at the same time. Uh, and so that makes for a much more, I think, in a good way, interesting, but also very challenging conversation about how you can use both.
Level three.
Because both are one-time, I know.
Institute. And. And the other thing that you had talked about, the, the reality for our recruitment process is that one of the most difficult hurdles to overcome is the possibility of housing in San Francisco. And over the years, the foundation has discussed the possibility of just buying a house, and that becomes the, the place where the student can graduate from. And that would potentially make us a much more attractive recruiting institution. It's a thought, but I don't, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate to use those funds for this, um, because I really, I really admire what you, what you did by highlighting, um, the emphasis on the underserved, privately underserved. And, and that's a major reason why I'm, that is, it's a major reason why most of us are here.
Yeah, the house idea, to be, to be fair, I, we talked about this, obviously, and I, I've talked to many folks. I think it's a, it's a great idea, it's one that there's about a half dozen local nonprofit organizations that have a, a home for their CEO or, or executive director. Uh, I think college would be well-served if you had something like that. Um, that said, because of the point of the gift, I think it would be, it would lead to a pretty tough, um, political values conversation, like, to use those dollars. That said, there are, in this community, people who have very occasionally raised the opportunity, like, would you accept a donation of a home, or a piece of property, or partial donation? Um, we always say yes, but it's in the background, but if that becomes a priority, um, we can put that higher on the list, because I, I, I'm certain that at some point, that will become.
But it's a twin-edged sword. Uh, some people may want to come here and invest in property and realize, uh, equity growth. But others will, and we, we know this, have said, no, we can't afford it. It's not a nice place to visit, but can afford it.
Right, and of course, you, you have that problem up and down the scale, so you, you lose a lot of faculty to that, and lose staff to that, and lose students. So, it's, it's hard to then say, it should only be for the students. But, but those are sometimes the gifts that come, and I can make the three examples in our community where I get a bit of that type of thing.
So, we've got about 13 minutes left, and I want two minutes at the end, so, uh.
Great. Um, just briefly, I, I appreciate your explain so far, and I really appreciate the, like, the ACE guide and. AIC guide and just teasing and looking at what has worked and the focus on underserved. The only thing that I'd say is, we were talking about this earlier, and that is the, the rather dramatic drop in the moment of my home, of COVID, of our underserved students. And so to me, that, that means there's this moment here where we might need to do something new to get those students back. And so that's, that I think would be very appropriate for this. Just.
Yeah, I would agree with that too, I think, as well, that we should look at endowment of summer, the program Jeff mentioned, that can do work. The transitions, the spark, the promise, the, you know, the span of promise that would never carry with the business. So that's, that, you know, it's maybe not as for underserved students, it'd be a great.
My point is, you know, you talked a lot about today, the next ten years to the college and what we need to do to become a more successful institution, serve more people. So I see all those big days of, yeah, cutting those holes and the things that already we need to do them, they will, we have a residential eighteen that says eliminate barriers. I think that's where the money, eliminate barriers for the underserved students. I mean, we all recognize that a fast foot doesn't generate more students are much more successful. I mean, I don't think money adding all of this, but it is at some point. So it is a lot of money, it's a lot of issues for me. I would say focusing on residential eighteen. But those three buckets are the way you expand it, but what residential eighteen would be a big commitment to underserved students, so going under that. I have a crazy idea, and this is probably not gonna work, but one crazy idea I had is, could we take out, like, a loan against this and spend a few of my money and then pay off the loan as like a small amount within endowed percentage? So if we endowed ten million, you know, gave us forty two thousand, help to be able to make like six million dollars per investment, and then you have ten million set aside, pay it off, and then twenty years later, we have again. So I was just wanting to get, you know, can you do these big versus complex myths? And the music for that.
I, I mean, I know what I'm reading for is what the gentleman said, like, I heard some are print and what you just said as well. Because I, I think those kind of big ideas are exactly the kind of thing to think about. Those are stretching, which is, I, I would always caution against a new something, but the exception of the current environment, which is really not, not so much new, sort of a newly intense version of a challenge we face. So I think all of that flows well into the intent of the gift. I would toss out a couple of other things. If you wanted to do something like, you know, use it as collateral against a larger one-time fusion of action and use it to pay debt, that's, you can leverage money that way, absolutely. You can buy property with it. So remember, we, you know, we did an early experiment by buying the whole Palmitio building, now a home for housing ecology. There were another property that we thought, well, this would be a great long-term investment. That's another thing you could think of. I know that sustainability has been a large challenge for us in that we had some great planning processes that we got to get able to get behind and do a lot of those ideas forward. Where you could allow a sustainability chair or a center or something to just always know that there's somebody with a high on that piece of work. So there's a lot of things like that you can do that otherwise wouldn't be conceivable, but because of the size of the game. So all of those, I think, even things that seem outlandish are not a vacuum, at least put on the table if we figure out a piece.
Go, oh, yeah. So I have two thoughts. One is that you emphasize over time about putting the money where it's, have that proven success, they've worked, and they just use it more on tonight. That makes me think about the promise program and how we can expand the promise program in a way that, the beauty of the promise program to me is the inducement to stay in school in two years and other things that we know are marker or are indicators of success. But if they stay in school, they're more likely to get the, maybe get a degree from law. So I'd like to see that possibly expanded beyond just maybe our district. You know, the promise program, why to, to just make some of the, or maybe just the concept of to induce other schools to stay in, in the village. For long line.
I will share that Sally Sandy reached out to me a few weeks back. She's got a window of something at Hancock College at the Font Promise Plus and asked me what about it, what would we use more of? So I, I called the Hancock leadership, talked to a few different folks there, and president's office, some counselors. And I think that that's sort of one version of how we can expand the mission promise and incentivize student enrollment and potentially improve retention persistence, which is, but they're using multiple funds for that. So they're actually losing various streams, her money and two others to do that. It's not coming from outside of land, just that their promises much smaller in scale and so far not yet fully funded by external planning. So there's, there's different ways to put that together. I mean, you've done it, we would try to fly it. But there are ways you could do a little version in the long run, and of course, that experiment now is in its fifth year. And, and that land state action is changing, no matter what happens with the Biden administration's proposal. And honestly, that would have huge effect for us, even in California, that's not a big disparity. Most of our promised dollars go to books and supply to tuition fees. But there's ways you can mix those, and some of those are one-time funds and some of those are also ongoing.
I was just gonna say, Jeff has recently not mentioned that one way we can multiply our impact is destroying foundations, which is to put back away, you know, like money, we talked about that, and putting an allowance on budget to down our year costs, which would be used at, they spend their energy on recent projects. And if you perhaps gave that additional aspect, if you particularly wanted to focus on communities that are promptly underserved, that goes into the, that expands the promise because people who are underserved, it's a perception of, you're a atheist, or too soon for promise, or you're seen, you laugh, it could come back. All of those people certainly belong for our community, there are some of that foundation could be better if we have some more conditions.
Appreciate that. You're right, I greatly do. Well, but I will say that, that leads back to what I, I guess, that first principle of what works now and how you structurally support it so that it's, it's not a constant stretch. And so the kind of, you start operating down so you don't have to help us raise the dollars every year with a piece of it, just like you could do that for any program. So those are also, I know that means that also we have a policy back there.
Well, I'd just like to say that I meant, even though, and I, you know, heard you were recording, Jeff and you said, you know, we've got this money, the first instinct is to spend it, so let's not do that. But I didn't have the experience, you know, that I'd like to, to, this is reinforced, I'll already discuss our summit. And I, you know, I really see this as a place to get that summit going, which is where we can talk about, we're the leader, the convener of this summit and look at these issues of enrollment and again, community college, of course, that didn't work, so I don't know what to talk about. So I'd like to at least see some of that money go towards us doing the summit.
I think all of these ideas that, that included, is that those are actually relatively small dollar gifts, I guess, so you could, you could come up with a list of sort of small dollar one-time, like this is, this gives us a chance to do these things. And then here's the structural pieces on top, and then here's the long-term discretion. I mean, all of that can easily get a point on the off. And so I would suggest that's probably a really smart way to look at it, is carve out some pieces for that sort of structural stability, what, you know, works. Have some pieces that are short, relatively small dollar longer, this is the expenditure, like this is our opportunity to do that. And then have these longer-term strategies that, that give that flexibility to the next generation, the next to do other things that we probably, I, you could do all that together.
Low cost, high impact.
Let me also, you brought up sustainability, I assume you support that. I think that if you as a sector will perhaps make a push for underserved communities, because they have a great impact on the final change options. And so if you need to step in that direction, perhaps program or some sort of specific effort, as you said, down the road, focus on those communities.
Yes, I couldn't agree more. I mean, sustainability properly understood in the current context is absolutely an issue. So I think there's ways to address it, that we, more dollars could go in a way that would again also provide maximum flexibilities that what we think is the right thing today, in five years, we learn that they're different, they did, then you have that flexibility. And, and the other thing I always share, and I know you don't have a lot of time left, is I, I think I am a volunteer, I'm volunteering, that I can share with you from the foundation perspective, since we're the receiver of asks at all levels, like I can reflect back to you, here's the things that we constantly get asked for, that there's never quite enough resources for, and maybe you're, I'm sure you're aware of some of them, you probably aren't of others. And if you saw outlets all in one place or, or not, you definitely, you know, influence your thinking about, but, oh, well, if that's a chronic problem, maybe you can solve it, find a way once in a while with this kind of thing.
Okay, I think we're at the end of that conversation. And I have one, I have a faulty F T. But, something about the day, sorry, some of the beginning, my reflection, all the way up to this moment. And I want you to just share one word, one word, not a sentence, not a phrase, one word that expresses how you feel about your experience today.
That would be awesome. How would you words?
And then I'll cover my heart with this word, and I want to say, I don't want to say that. Yes, sir, trusty Miller.
I thought it was a good day.
That's more than one word. One more, sorry, motivating. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that brings to mind. Oh, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now you're off on a new adventure to, to college in San Francisco.
You're easy.
Oh, darn, I was hoping it would be a new, more challenge. So to close, do you guys want me to be in person next time, or shall we continue our journey experience?
Will we be in the other?
Yeah. Do they want to sit? Eight, no, eight to eleven? Okay. I'd say after that, with the, with the, 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 we may do, do the, the discussion.
I would say that, I see we have a comment.
Yeah, I was wondering, does that mean that public comment would only be in person? You guys weren't in person?
That's, that's, yeah, that's what I would, that's what I would, I really appreciate Zoom, that it is a public comment. And I don't know if there's a way, I mean, I know there's a way, but I don't know, okay, things I don't know.
You can do that. That's, that's, yeah, we're talking about it, actually.
Yeah.
You guys are, you guys are talking hand to hand.
Yeah. Yeah, once before. And I suppose my rationality is, I think part of those words came from the fact that we're together. And I, I miss that, and I think we, like anybody else who's not actually been together, has made that same process. And I'd like to see what happens if we actually come together and start working together as we had to think. I think that, you know, we got beneficial results. So in your second, it would be before a lot, we will use some do for a couple of comments. And like, you know, I have a few main judgments, but the length of the comment, we should, I didn't, we kind of maximum three minutes. In which case, if there are a lot of people who want to see, we're gonna produce three minutes, and we're gonna go with that. We're gonna have Chad involved, some sort of a hammer, just for, for my. So it's small, it can cut you off. I hope you are happy as much as you can. And that's for sure. We are here.